The steps of Los Angeles City Hall were filled with supporters of Cleanup Greenup, a locally initiated effort that starts with local businesses. The initiative looks to establish green zones in Boyle Heights, Pacoima, and Wilmington, areas that suffer from an accumulation of toxic air emissions. The intense exposure heightens the risk of premature death, asthma, and other respiratory illnesses and cancer.
The concentration of pollution impacts those areas most heavily, but the pollution's effects do not stop at the borders of those neighborhoods. It affects all of the city of Los Angeles.
We are also members of the community, and when we heard about Cleanup and Greenup, we were really excited to join on.
The initiative combines urban planning approaches and economic incentives to help businesses clean up their operations.
So rather than just punishing the businesses, rather than just pushing them out of our neighborhoods, we want to work with them to modernize their technology, to modernize their standards, and provide health environment for our communities.
We see what this could really, how this could really help us as well, to take our business to another level and how it really is a win-win.
High schooler Janet Laredo has eye infections thought to be linked to the pollution, which have affected her vision.
As much as I love Wilmington, there's just too much energy, too much pollution. I live next to one of thirteen major polluters in Wilmington, some which are oil refineries.
Following the rally, the city council's Planning and Land Use Management Committee, also known as PLUM, voted in favor of the Cleanup Greenup motion. The program will streamline the permitting process for businesses and help provide better access to various business support programs. That's news that's helping residents breathe a little easier. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
To learn more about Cleanup Greenup, visit their website at CleanupGreenupLA.org. Turning to some transportation news, just a little over a month after service began on Metro's Expo Line, work is now beginning in earnest on the Crenshaw LAX Light Rail Line in South LA. The first phase of the Crenshaw LAX Light Rail Line project includes utility relocation work at ten spots along the Crenshaw Corridor over a twelve-month period. Once completed, the eight-point-five-mile light rail project will run between the Expo Line on Exposition Boulevard and the Metro Green Line. The project is being funded by LA County voter-approved Measure R.
With Measure R, we're investing thirty-six billion dollars in building more transit lines, safer roads and highways, and better, more efficient bus service.
This is the first project in which Metro, under its project labor agreement, will ensure that residents and not-out-of-towners will be hired to work on the project.
It means that there will be local hire, that is to say, forty percent of those who work on this project will have to be residents who live within five miles of this project.
The Crenshaw LAX Light Rail will serve the Crenshaw Corridor, Inglewood, Westchester, and the LAX area with six stations. Residents in the Eighth District are also celebrating the beginning of a much anticipated project that had been a quarter of a century in the making. Here again is Cindy San Luis, who reveals which business will be breaking ground in Baldwin Hills.
You used to come by and dread and roll up your windows and not look to the south or the north. You'd look at it and you'd say, "When are they gonna do something about it? Well, we're gonna do something about it."
Councilmember Bernard Parks is talking about Marlton Square, the twenty-acre shopping center that had fallen into disrepair and sits nearly vacant at the corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Marlton Avenue in Baldwin Hills.
The blight came and it just turned into abandoned buildings and a lot of break-ins.
Dolores Golden is just one of many residents who have waited decades to hear what was to come of Marlton Square.
Three, two, one. Twenty-five years ago, Mayor Tom Bradley mandated that this site, then known as Santa Barbara Plaza, be completely rehabilitated. After many stops and starts, the community is now celebrating the welcoming of a major tenant here at Marlton Square.
Kaiser Permanente has closed escrow on over eight acres of land, with plans to construct an outpatient medical office building at the location.
But we own this. I want you to know it is ours. It grew out of those of us that are committed to the City of the Angels.
This is the real deal. I've been to five groundbreakings on this site. This is, this is the real deal. This is going to happen.
Development of Marlton Square had been plagued by numerous problems, most recently the 2004 default of the previous developer and the bankruptcy of its lender in 2006. Councilmember Parks spent the past five years securing funding so the now-defunct Community Redevelopment Agency of Los Angeles could purchase a majority of the remaining properties in an effort to salvage the project.
We're real happy to see a turnaround, a total turnaround, because it's been a long, painful journey.
And with the future construction of Kaiser Permanente, the old saying, "Good things come to those who wait," rings true for the community of Baldwin Hills, even if the wait was twenty-five years long. From Marlton Square, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
And Kaiser Permanente is in the beginning stages of development, which requires the city to approve its plans before construction can begin. Over in Hollywood, a long-awaited construction project is finally completed as well. Hollywood's Fire Station 82 is taking firefighting to a whole new level, thanks to a brand-new high-tech facility. Yana Kay takes us inside.
This state-of-the-art building on the corner of Hollywood Boulevard and Van Ness Avenue is the new home to Fire Station 82. The new fire station will cover areas including East Hollywood, Las Feliz, Griffith Park, Hollywood Hills, and others.
All this is very important to have that instant fire protection and also paramedic service, so it means a lot to the community.
The eighteen-thousand-square-foot facility was funded by Prop F, which was approved by voters. Fire officials say the new three-story building allows the fire department to be better prepared and to respond more efficiently to fires and emergencies.
So in times when we do have those hot, dry conditions with the wind blowing, stations like this with extra space allow us the opportunity to pre-stage resources. I can bring more engine companies, more firefighters, and I can stage them here in this facility for if we do have an incident here in the Hollywood Hills or in Griffith Park.
Now, one of the most unique features about this new fire station is that it is completely green. Now, right now, we're on the rooftop of the building, and as you can see, they've planted this green plant throughout the entire roof. And basically, what this does is it keeps the building cool and reduces energy costs.
Tom Labonge and I are committed and introduced motion this year to make sure that we restore further services to our fire department in this coming year.
Services that officials hope will keep our community safe and protected. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
The official grand opening of the fire station was held earlier this month. The latest video games unveiled at E3, LA's bike path lights up with energy-saving solutions, and honoring an organization dedicated to helping Latino students. These stories and more in City Beat. The Electronic Entertainment Expo, better known as E3, arrived at the Los Angeles Convention Center last week. The three-day trade event brought together, under one roof, two hundred vendors, retailers, and hardware and software publishers from the computer and video gaming industry.
What's really exciting for me as councilwoman and for the city of Los Angeles is the thirty-thousand-room nights, the thirty-nine million-dollar in net new revenue projected to come into the city, the restaurants, at the bars, and the entertainment venues, so we've got a lot to celebrate.
Fans attended events ranging from new video game unveilings and demos to big announcements from gaming companies. The Department of Public Works helped mark National Public Works Week with several projects here in the city, including installing light-emitting diode, or LED, lights along the Los Angeles River Bike Way in Councilman Tom Labonge's Fourth District. There are one-hundred-sixty-nine lights in the Council District Four portion of the LA River Bike Way, extending from Riverside Drive near Zoo Drive down to Glendale Boulevard near Hyperion Avenue. All of those lights have been changed to LED lights, saving the city about sixty percent in energy costs, with almost a third of those lights fitted with solar panels for further energy conservation. The first-ever LA Gang Violence Prevention and Intervention Conference, organized by the Violence Prevention Coalition, convened here in Los Angeles last month. Mayor Antonio Viegas delivered the event's welcome speech.
In every single community, the violence numbers, the crime numbers are down dramatically. But this, tell that to a mother who lost her kid, you know?
The two-day conference held at the California Endowment included workshops on issues such as jaw placement for ex-gang members and even hospital-based gang intervention. With Councilman Jose Wezar's help, the city council recently honored the Hispanic Scholarship Fund in the city council for promoting higher education among Latinos.
As a former recipient of this scholarship, I know how important it is to, for us to provide our young Latino students the ability to go on and complete their college education.
Since it was established in nineteen-seventy-five, the HSF has given away more than three-hundred-sixty-million dollars in college scholarships. History comes to life for the residents of San Pedro. An artifact is accidentally discovered in an unexpected place and returned to its proper home more than a hundred years later. It's the talk of the town over in San Pedro, and over-century-old granite plaque from the old San Pedro City Hall returns to the site of its former home.
This plaque was from the old San Pedro City Hall, and sadly, this building was not preserved and was dismantled and buried in what was then the outskirts of town, which was North Gaffey.
And it was at a construction site on North Gaffey Street that this historic plaque was unearthed.
I want to thank the member of the community who was enthused and took the time to make sure that it was, came to somebody's attention, what he had found.
The year nineteen-oh-seven can still be seen chiseled onto the plaque. That was the year the old San Pedro City Hall was dedicated.
Well, we're really proud to see this stone returned to its original location when it was erected here back in nineteen-oh-seven. It was a terrific find to find us where it was and get it returned here, so we're glad to see it come back.
One-hundred-and-five years to the day it was first dedicated, the plaque was reinstalled at the site of the original San Pedro City Hall, what is now the Pepper Tree Plaza at Sixth Street and South Harbor Boulevard. And adjacent to it, the San Pedro Municipal Building, progress made on the foundations laid more than a century ago. The plaque was retrieved from the construction site by the Department of Recreation and Parks, verified for authenticity by the San Pedro Historical Society, and cleaned and installed by Reckon Parks. And in this week's list of things to do, an outdoor summer movie screening, a film and literary festival all about being multiracial, and learning how to do it yourself. Summer is here, and so is the Oscars Outdoors Summer Movie Series. The series is hosted by the Academy of Motion Pictures, Arts, and Sciences at the site of its new seven-point-five-acre campus located at thirteen-forty-one Vine Street in Hollywood. Gates open at six-thirty PM with the screenings beginning at sunset. The outdoor screening series will occur over ten weekends, beginning Friday, June fifteenth, with the nineteen-forty-two classic Casablanca. Unfortunately, if you haven't already purchased tickets, the screening is sold out, but there will be a standby line on the day of the movie. For more details on that or to find out about upcoming screenings, go to oscars.org and click on Events and Exhibitions. And over at the Japanese-American National Museum, racial diversity, or multiracialism to be exact, will be the topic of discussion at the Fifth Annual Mixed Roots Film and Literary Festival, sponsored by the New York Foundation for the Arts. The event takes place on Saturday and Sunday, June sixteenth and seventeenth, at the museum, which is located at one-hundred North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo. The festival celebrates the mixed racial and cultural experience with two days of writing and film workshops, readings, film screenings, and live performances. The festival is free and open to the public. For more information, go to mxroots.org. And if you have some free time on your hands this summer, why not learn to DIY, do it yourself? Join the Craft and Folk Art Museum Saturday, June sixteenth, from noon to six PM, as it hosts a handmade summer. The museum will invite some of its favorite local artists for a day of demos, DIY workshops, and plenty of handmade inspirations. The museum is located at five-eight-one-four Wilshire Boulevard. Info can be found at cafam.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. More than one hundred international musicians, dancers, and singers performed recently at the Cultural Day at the Grove Farmers Market to celebrate the city's Sister Cities Program. Yana Kay has more.
The soothing sounds of this performance resonate throughout the farmers' market at the Grove. It's all part of the Sister Cities Cultural Day.
This is a great event. We've been coming to the Sister City event for many, many years. Our folk dance group dances all the time, and it's, it's just great to see all the different cultures participating.
Dozens of performers from LA's twenty-five Sister Cities took to the stage, proudly representing their culture and heritage through music, dance, and beautiful costumes.
Cultural music, cultural dance, people love it, and it's all about people of people, so I'm very proud of all our involvement and all the people today who are here.
Sister Cities of Los Angeles was formed in nineteen-fifty-nine with Nagoya, Japan, and Elat, Israel, to increase awareness and increase cultural understanding. More than fifty years later and twenty-five Sister Cities strong, the program is a major force in international relations and trade for the city of LA. Other participating cities include Mexico City, Beirut, Jakarta, Mumbai, San Salvador, Taipei, and others.
Life is short, you believe every day, my laos. Enjoy life.
City officials say using the universal language of music and dance helps promote relationships with cities and people around the world. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
I brought my hopes and dreams for a better life.
Since becoming a U.S. citizen.
I'm running for public office.
I've checked with the freedom and security of a U.S. passport.
And I voted for president of the United States.
U.S. citizenship means a better life.
I chose opportunity.
I chose freedom.
I chose responsibility.
I chose to become a U.S. citizen.
I'm a proud American.
Now is our time to work as one. To create something beautiful. To start again. To ease a burden. To provide hope where there was none. There's so many ways to create the good. What will you do?
Start creating the good by visiting iparticipate.org.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel Thirty-Five, our City View channel.[1065.98]
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weesar moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Committory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alacourt moves, Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and now would be the time for the flag salute.
And as we ask you all to rise, I want to recognize Councilmember Zion and Rosendahl for leading us in the pledge of allegiance and also a very, very special presentation. Mr. Zion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Please place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Zion, if we could have your very special presentation at this time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, thank you colleagues, and thank you, Los Angeles. Today, we celebrate the 237th birthday of the United States Army. And as you see the video play and the folks at home are watching that video, Thursday, June 14th, is the official birthday of the United States Army. Two hundred and thirty-seven years ago, the United States Army was established to defend our nation. From the Revolutionary War to the current operations taking place around the world, our soldiers remain army-strong with a deep commitment to our core values and beliefs. This 237th birthday commemorates armies, Americas, soldiers, families, civilians, who are achieving a level of excellence that is truly army-strong. Being army-strong goes beyond physical endurance and mental preparedness. It encompasses the spirit, high ethical and moral values. These are not only desirable traits in a person, but in a nation that wishes to live up to the ideals and visions of its founders. Today, the Army relies on volunteers to answer the call to serve, just like it did in 1775, when a handful of men came forward to serve our country's first soldiers. In 2008, I made a commitment to serve on the United States Army Los Angeles Community Advisory Board, and many of the distinguished guests in chambers today are members of that group called COI, Center of Influence. The mission of the advisory board is to help the Army meet its recruitment mission in Southern California and keep the Army strong. America's Army, which includes soldiers, their families, Army civilians, epitomizes what is best about America. Their willingness to sacrifice to build a better future for others and to preserve our way of life is the strength of our nation. I am extremely proud to be a strong supporter of the United States Army and its mission. Today, we are celebrating the Army's birthday, commemorating those who voluntarily stand in harm's way to put duty, honor, and country first. We need to continue to keep our Army strong so the Army can continue to keep our country strong. And joining me is a veteran of the United States Army colleague Bill Rosendahl, and a couple of comments from my colleague, and then we will turn it over to Lieutenant Colonel Blankenship, the commander of the Los Angeles Recruitment Battalion.
Thank you, Mr. Zion, and thank you for your continued support and leadership for the U.S. Army. Having been a veteran from the Vietnam era, having dealt with a war called Vietnam, dealing with soldiers who put themselves in harm's way for their great nation, it is an honor and a privilege for me to be standing with my comrades, the fellas who are still out there fighting for what's right and supporting our great nation. God bless the U.S. Army and God bless America. Thank you, Bill.
The strength of our nation is our Army. The strength of our Army is our soldiers. The strength of our soldiers is our families. And we are very honored to host the 38th Chief of Staff, General Raymond T. Narro. He was with us at breakfast at Bradley Tower this morning, addressed the distinguished group, and he had to leave for other engagements, but we are very honored and pleased to have a four-star general here in City Council this morning. As you remember, we had Admiral Mullen, who was here previously, so this distinguished city hall is very honored to have the leaders of our nation's military and to recognize them. I now want to turn it over to Lieutenant Colonel Blankenship, and we will then have a cake-cutting ceremony with the youngest and oldest soldier with the Army Saber, Lieutenant Colonel Blankenship.
Well, thank you, Dennison. Thank you for all the support that you've given the Army, especially locally here in Los Angeles. We couldn't do as well as we do without you, and we truly appreciate it. Can I just ask, I know we have Mr. Rosenfahl up, but what other veterans do we have in the room?
I'd ask all veterans to stand up in the room. Look behind you back there, Lieutenant.
There we go, here we go.
I tell you what, what a great day to be a soldier. All I can say about today is hooa! See if I can make that echo a little bit in the chambers this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, you're in for a treat, as we did last year. We're going to do the cake-cutting now as part of the ceremonial process of celebrating the Army's birthday. We have my boss, Colonel Lotner, the commander of six recruiting brigade, here with us to help celebrate the Army's birthday. We have Sergeant First Class Oliver, and special guest is one of our future soldiers that enlisted from right here in LA County, Private Aaron Sandoval. They're going to do the ceremonial cake-cutting. Sir, if you could come forward to administer that, we would appreciate it.
Please follow me.
Longstanding tradition of the oldest soldier and the youngest soldier in the unit. So, future soldiers, obviously, the youngest at 20 years old.
Let's get our photographers lined up for the capture of the moment.
Try to break the table. There might be a little splatter here, folks. Can I get a hooa on three? One, two, and three. Hooa!
There we go. There we go. Very nice. Very good. The United States Army 237th birthday cake. And Mr. Zion, would you be so kind, thank Lieutenant Colonel Blankenship, the distinguished guests are on the front row over there, and then Mike?
Well, let me get one distinguished guest who's a member of our entertainment.
I want them all, I want them all.
You want them all? Well, here, we'll go down the row. Sir?
Yes, sir. Mike Tylemann, USO and KTLA. Oh, Army Reserve Ambassador.
Linda Stripling, USO.
Wayne Kaufman.
Jay McCann, Army Infantry.
Bob Archuleta, Mayor of the City of Pico Rira, and an Army veteran.
And what about your sons?
Okay, and a father of two sons have graduated from West Point.
And this man looks familiar. Who is this man?
Rick Schroeder, proud Angelino and proud American.
Very good. All right.
Michael Gregory, veteran, member of the COI, Celebrity Liaison for the Stars and Stripes Foundation. Armored Marvelian involved in the whole.
All right, here, we got some other folks here.
William Kill, proud parent of three children in the U.S. Military.
And we even have, we even have a retired lieutenant colonel who's with us.
Lieutenant Colonel Patricia Jackson Kelly.
Very good. And from the Court of Appeals.
Justice Jeff Johnson, glad to be here.
Thank you, Justice. And the justice serves with us on our Center of Influence.
Laura Shigamitsu, Cal State, Los Angeles, Veterans Coordinator.
Judy Goffin, Army Strong.
Rebecca Morgan, Fullerton College.
Doctor.
Thank you.
Tony Clementson, U.S. Army.
Manny Rivera, U.S. Army.
Jesus Miranda, U.S. Army.
Eric Nishizawa, Los Angeles Community Advisory Board.
That's a great team there, Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. We do have, we have some other military personnel that are here joining us this morning, and it was an honor again to have a four-star general here in City Hall this morning.
Captain Babcock, I'm the Los Angeles Company Army Recruiting Commander.
Captain Payne, Los Angeles Army Recruiting Battalion.
Captain Ben Bradley, Los Angeles Recruiting Battalion.
I think that's it for our guests that are here, and what we're going to do is a group photo.
Group photo, but as they do, I want to call on the great Eric Garcetti, who is serving his country.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations to my Army brothers and sisters on your birthday. We're looking forward, and the Navy is celebrating our 237th on October 13th. I often tell the story of my grandfather, who came here as an immigrant from Mexico, and he served in the Army in World War II, and as a result of that, got his citizenship. And our fighting men and women around the country and around the world are the very best that this world has to offer. I do wanted to say, as Mr. Buscagno brought in the USS Iowa, that while we serve hand-in-hand, we have a good rivalry, and I, since I was elected in 2001, I think that was the last year, if I'm not mistaken, that Army beat Navy, and it's been now, what is it, 10, 10 years, 10 or 11 years?
Oh, Eric.
So I wish you good luck this year. May you do your best, and I hope that you can try to beat Navy, but go Navy, we love you Army.
Let's give the United States Army on their birthday a big hand, and thank everybody. Special recognition, a louder hand for our veterans here. Let's give it up also to late great Johnny Grant, who was such a friend of the USO.
Thank you, Mr. Labons, Mr. Chair. What we are going to do is take this cake to the back, and all of the members here are invited to have that cake. It's a huge birthday cake, so we want to again celebrate 237th birthday of the United States Army. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much. You betcha.
Members, if you could now direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Items one and two are items noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that item 2H may be received and filed in as much as a lien has been paid. And there's requests to continue item 2G to July 24th, and to continue item 2J to July 25th.
Without objection on those items, those items were received and filed and continued. Any cards?
Cards on items one and two.
So we will call those special, right? Are we, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Items three through nine are items which public hearings have been held.
Three through nine. Members, any specials? Seven special. Any special? Okay. Let's open the roll on three, two, nine, holding number seven for special. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes. Mr. President, there's a request for item eight to go forthwith.
Absolutely. Next items.
Items 10 through 16 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
For consideration, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So any cards?
Cards on items 10, 12, and 15.
Yes, let's call those special, 10, 12, and 15.
And Mr. President, for item 14, that should be received and filed in as much as council acted on this matter on Friday through a Rule 23 motion.
Very good. Let's, yeah, Madam, Madam, Ms. Perry?
Correction on item 13, please.
Technical correction on item 13.
Do you want me to do it now?
Sure. Let's consider item 13.
I'd like to make a technical correction, a verbal motion to direct the Planning Department to submit the application to the Cultural Heritage Commission instead of the Cultural Affairs Department. The Department of City Planning staffs the Cultural Heritage Commission through the Office of Historic Resources, and that is on item 13.
Madam Clerk, you have that?
Yes.
Good correction. Mr. Kokorian?
The court's been dealt with.
It's been dealt with, very good. So, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Counsel should vote on the remaining items.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next items are closed session?
Yes, and for item 11, Mr. President, the hourly rate for the interim city librarian will be $113.48 an hour.
Very well, thank you.
Item 17 is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold it on the desk?
I'd like to hold it on the desk.
Item 18 is an item noticed for public hearing. There is requests to note and file this item.
Without objection, let's go and file it.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's a card on item 18.
All right, then we'll call it special. Thank you for doing that. Next item?
Item 19 is the, is the item for which public hearing has been held. I believe the Budget and Finance Committee report has not been circulated yet. Counsel should hold this on the desk.
Hold it on the desk. Twenty through 27?
Items 20 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration. Item 22, an amending motion, is forthcoming. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Hold that on the desk. Are there any cards on 20, 27?
Cards on item 24 and 27.
Let's call those special, the other items.
24 has a card.
Excuse me, 24 special? Mr. Parks, 24 special?
Yes, for Mr. Rosendahl.
24 special for Mr. Rosendahl. 26 special for Mr. Buscagno. Any other specialist members? On the ballot, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and then 28 is the next item?
Yes, item 28 is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold it on the desk?
Yeah, I want to hold it on the desk.
And also, Mr. President, there's a request for item 21 to go forthwith.
For 21 to go forthwith, no problem. Mr. Parks?
21, 25, forthwith.
21 and 25 forthwith, request of Mr. Parks. And additionally, do we have, Ms. Perry, for a presentation? One moment, please. Let me please welcome to the podium, Councilwoman Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'm very proud to wear the jersey today of the Los Angeles Kings, and we're going to have a great week. But in the meantime, this is a moment for Eric Richardson. He is the founder and the creator of Blog Downtown, and I wanted to recognize him for his pioneering work in the digital arena. Blog Downtown started in 2005, when Eric took his communications degree and his computer programming skills and created a blog that chronicled the emerging community here in downtown Los Angeles. The site grew from a blog featuring Eric and his creative director, Ed Fuentes, to a vital piece of news for residents to quickly catch up with rapidly changing developments in downtown. This included the addition of thousands of new residents, the incredible expansion of Art Walk, the emergence of Seventh Street as Restaurant Row, the opening of LA Live, and that's just to name a few. Now, Eric took his passion for news and downtown and started writing pieces on culture, art, travel, and civic planning, and transportation issues. This blog was viewed by 30,000 readers on a monthly basis. It's now been expanded to include a periodical, Blog Downtown Weekly, and it is further added to the conversation, reflecting the downtown emergence and lifestyle with cultural contributions like Downtown Art Walk. Recently, Blog Downtown was incorporated as a part of KPCC and will now join forces with Southern California Public Radio in an effort to expand its role in the greater civic conversation. And this was all made possible by Eric's tremendous vision and love for the city of Los Angeles. So, as he departs for Atlanta, which is our loss and Atlanta's gain, I don't know if that's anything to clap about, he's going to Atlanta. Thank you, Eric, for making Blog Downtown your passion for over seven years. He will leave a lasting voice in the downtown art and lifestyle scene, and I wanted to publicly thank him. And his colleague and longtime friend, Ed Fuentes, wanted me to read this message because he couldn't be here today. It says, "Here is a young man who proved how the city of Los Angeles and downtown inspires thinking and creativity, first as a solo act, then with a collaborator, and on to radio. The city's corps had its inner voice speak up on policy, people, and place. Here's the leader of the geek chorus, my friend Eric," and this is from your friend, Ed Fuentes. So, Eric, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor to be here in downtown Los Angeles over the last eight years and watch as the city center has grown and reinvented itself, and it's been a pleasure to be a part of that and a part of the conversation around that. And, you know, I'm leaving a downtown that I think has grown up. It can, you know, it can do without me now, so we're off to other things and look forward to coming back and visiting and seeing what happens in the years to come.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Before you get away there, Mr. Weesar wants to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and Eric, we're surely going to miss you. Good luck in Atlanta. Last week, our Bringing Back Brighter Initiative hosted a happy hour for you, and there was a lot of great memories and discussion about what you contributed to downtown. It takes a lot of risk and courage to do what you did. Start off with nothing and say, "Let's see how this goes," and it went from a blog to print to radio. It showed the success, but I want to congratulate you and thank you. You certainly brought a lot of us together in downtown with all your work, and you and your wife are going to have a wonderful time in Atlanta. If you guys ever get homesick, you know you're going to have a welcome carpet here in downtown Los Angeles. Thank you so much, Eric.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Let's give him a big hand for his work there. Madam Clerk, I want to take public comment right now, real quick. Thank you. Sean Murphy, here we go, Sean. Jill, was it back? Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman.
I didn't come by myself today. I came with my girlfriend today, Tom. Uh, everyone knows today's my last day at City Hall. Have a nice summer, everybody. But we do need to keep the streets open and the sidewalk repairs. That's it.
Thank you, Sean. Come on up, Jill.
It's her first time at City Hall, Tom.
Thank you very much, Sean.
First time. I've never been here. I want to find out what they're going to do with the animals in the, um, in the, um, uh, the kettles and stuff. They've been do, um, um, killing the animals over there.
Thank you very much, Jill. If you go to the ropes, we'll get staff to help you. Mr. Herman?
You have more time?
No.
Mr. Herman, I'm directing the meeting. Jill, if you ask your question, we'll get an answer at the ropes.
Okay.
You completed. Thank you very much.
She's done now, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Welcome, Mr. Herman.
Fellow residents of Boyle Heights and those of you in Los Angeles, as you all know, we, the people, we are the people. Congratulations, Kings, for your spectacular win. And morsel, thank you, Broadway L.A., for all the confusion in which you've created on Broadway. Still at Hazard Park, sirs, if you're listening, Mr. Lombon, since you're an advocate on parks and wrecks, we still have a condition that is not in compliance with American Disability Act, ADA. And the situation is not getting better, but after eight years, I believe it's just worse when you cannot allow certain civilians, pedestrians, people with disabilities to go to the park. Hazard Park has been our community for more than 50 years, and yet my councilman walks away. Yes, temporary, we have a sidewalk, but what about the sidewalks for us to enjoy around the play areas? We have family members that are in wheelchairs, family members in walkers, and there are people who are not listening today because I believe it doesn't affect you. Please, city of Los Angeles, hear my cries as we, the city, should cry because the deficit has continued to plumb us into this outrageousness where we can't even provide simple access to the people in our residency, which is Boyle Heights. And again, thank you for the 10 years of our support of our neighborhood councils, 10 years only, and yet all we ask for are access and compliance and not defiance. So again, we, the people, speak here at City Hall. Join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Michael, carry on. Mr. John Walsh, Mr. Bill Hui, next speakers.
That was cool.
Sorry, Mr. Coretts, Michael, one moment, please.
I just want to ask that, uh, items 6 go forth with?
Item 6 go forth with. So ordered. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to ask the, uh, President, what are we going to do about the habitual tardiness of council members? One on the phone, and I'm talking to you, not to them, other ones reading the paper, on the computer. You guys want to take away public comment? You're doing it in San Fernando. The council members from San Fernando aren't even paying attention. So what I tell the people from San Fernando, succeed. Do it like you tried before, and maybe your council members will listen.
Yes, you can.
They don't want to pay attention to you. They don't want to give you your satellite. They don't want to do anything for you. Fire them. You don't like the city of L.A., leave. Make your own city. Make it the city of San Fernando.
Yes.
But speak up or shut up. That's what I say. My council members make me come down here to speak up. I got the sidewalk put in, it's a temporary sidewalk. Mr. Buscaino walked away. Two weeks ago, he canceled the meeting with that property owner. Gave him more time. The property owner called him and told him, "I don't have the proper paperwork." Eight years, and he still doesn't have a, can't put up a wall. Overnight, you guys can build, you guys can arrange a parade. You guys all got new jerseys you didn't have yesterday, but you can get a parade coordinated overnight. But we can't get one wall built in El Sarino, Boyle Heights. That sells me about the leadership we have. And this horseshoe here is pathetic. When the, when the president sits up there and a new member comes into City, City Council to speak, and he's rude to her. Shame on you, Mr. Lombon. That's rude. But again, that's you. Have a good day.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, brand new blog post up. And incidentally, uh, I'd like to say that our chairman here, Mr. Lombon, is actually doing an excellent job, excellent job compared to his predecessor, Mr. Garcetti. HollywoodHighlands.org, we defeated, read about, who defeated Carmen Trutanich? It was no great surprise. The blogosphere, the bloggers defeated him. We don't expect our rivals at the legacy media to say that. Of course not. It came as a big surprise. It came as a vindication to us, and I would now like to read the honor roll of those blogs and bloggers that defeated Carmen Trutanich last Tuesday. Alphabetical order, Stephen Box, Celeste Fremont, Joe Friday, Michael Higbee, Jack Humphreyville, Scott Johnson, Ron Kay, Joseph Mailander, Mayor Sam, Street Smart, Walsh Confidential, Witness L.A., anyone else I missed, just come up to me and I'll do the list again. We want to, you ought to realize now that we come out of the electorate. We are the electorate. We are not Zanheiser and all these L.A. Times people who just work for the establishment and print what the establishment says. We are the electorate. We defeated Carmen Trutanich, and incidentally, on some issues, he was quite good, but overall, he was a little nutty. And we would like to point out right now, another rape in Hollywood. Mr. Garcetti isn't here. Incidentally, he is rape immune. He doesn't care. We had a rape last week, and Mr. Lombon, I believe it was in your district, it was on Lower Vine Street. Uh, we have enormous numbers of rape in Hollywood. No one gives a damn. One white woman is, is raped on Melrose Avenue when a white neighborhood enters police alert. We have a, we have a police chief who is a racist. Come to our website right now. You'll be surprised what you see. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Hui, please.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, members of the L.A. City Council. Most of you know me as the advocate for equality for landlords and renters. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition, fairhousingcoalition.com. One thing you may not know about me, and maybe we can put this to good use, I've been, I do publicity. My primary career is I work in the entertainment industry, and I produce red carpet events for film premieres. And the reason I'm telling you this is if you're ever doing an event in your district where you want a little bit more media, I know tons of celebrities. I have over 300 PR firms in my database. And when I put the word out, uh, celebrities show up, media show up. I do about one red carpet event a month, but if you're doing something to give a little spotlight, a little media spotlight to a charity or some organization that's working for the greater good, uh, if you email me or call me, I can give my card to Sergeant at Arms. I can put the word out, get a few celebrities, and the media will show up in droves. And that's basically what I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have a card here for the United World of Free. You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, uh, the United World of Free and Clear, it's a concept that we need to look into. We need a world with no landlords. Um, we, the people, uh, oh, I want to say something about the Army. I'm a veteran. Um, I was in the Mexican Army one day. I paid $50 and got out of there quickly because they are stupid. Anyway, every Army is not quite that bright, but, you know, they, they say it themselves, "Keep it simple, stupid." Anyway, uh, all I'm saying is this, we are smart enough to overturn this negative tide where people will lose their homes for any reason. We are in a homeless-making system, and we need to change it. Who is going to change it? All of us. I don't come to City Hall to, to complain. I come here to explain and to offer a formula, and City Hall does not listen. Look at Lombon. 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 Are you paying attention? I don't think so. See? We, we, the people, come here to be listened to. I went to every city council member's office yesterday, and I told your secretaries, I told them, "We need to exercise dialogue. We cannot have city council giving us a monologue, 13 ayes for every item." You know, you all vote together. Hello?
All right, let's go to San Fernando Valley. Donna Pearman, Sharon Brewer, Marian Folger.
Folger, by the way, that's her, her name. Anyway, uh, yeah, so, uh, this, I'm speaking for almost the last time when you're going to be pulling, uh, you're talking about pulling the plug over here in the San Fernando Valley. And I don't think, uh, by the way, I, I don't like how Dennis Zein spoke to me. Uh, Dennis Zein doesn't seem to care about, uh, people with, uh, disabilities. All he can see is the bottom line, and then, uh, not too many people come down to, uh, uh, not too many people come to Van Nuys. By the way, don't vote for Dennis Zein for Controller. But anyway, um, he only sees a small amount. He doesn't see the people that are here, and neither do the city council. They don't see that, uh, the, the, the ones that come here are disabled and have troubles here over here. They don't see that Marian Folger has, uh, diabetes and neuropathy, and always makes it almost impossible for her to go downtown, and then she'll be laid up with her disability after having to go down there. She doesn't see the other people that are here. She doesn't see, they don't see that I have, uh, that I had, uh, I have pain in my legs from chemotherapy that I had five years ago that never seemed to get better. So, and I'm thin.
You're fat bigots.
Yeah.
Forget it, because she's thin and she has problems herself.
We need to save, uh, I know that you've spent $10,000 and a day, I used to be, on fee, fee waivers. So don't tell me on this business that you have to save money. And, and don't make it a big deal because there's aren't that many people. Uh, believe me, there could be, anyway, it, what is important, that there are people down here. And if you can spend $10,000 on a fee waiver and spend lots of money and spend money on these presentations all over the place, certainly you can find the money to, and, uh, and the 81 cars over there for your staff. Certainly you can find that amount of money to save Van Nuys.
Thank you very much.
Help us go.
Ms. Folger.
I'm not sure I speak. You're not going to shut me up, and I'm going to tell you, I'm going to take action. I already got people down here, and they're going to take action, and they're going to do what they can. They're going to, you better keep this on and have a public hearing for the, for the Valley, San Fernando Valley. You're going to be very sorry for what you're doing, you're, you're a bunch of crooks. And I'll tell you, you're doing this so you could take away more rights, our gun rights, take more labor rights away from the public workers here, their benefits and pensions, because you know, you want to shut us off. You think you're going to do that, huh? Well, I'll tell you something. I can still get around. I'm not like I'm in a lung machine, thank God, but I'm going to be in a lot of pain, and I'm going to be screaming because I have, I have arthritis in my bottom of my feet. And you're going to be hearing from me because you're not, I'm not going to allow you to take, and take away the American Disabilities Act and discriminate me because that's going to be, uh, illegal, what you're doing. And also the Brown Act. You did not give a public hearing on this matter. No full public input from the Valley, San Fernando Valley. No hearings. So you'll be hearing from us, very loud and clear. You haven't heard the last. You've only heard the beginning. Because I'm going to keep fighting on and on and on to my very last breath because this is the Tower of Bal at its best. You are going downhill. You're going nowhere. Because I know everything is dictatorial here. You're all dictators. You want to turn it back to Europe, where the rich only run everything. The rich have everything. You have your wealthy 81 cars, and you can't even find $10,000, $11,000 in your bud, that budget. Well, I'm going to see to it that I stop your dang budget because I'm going to start cussing and everything else, just like all the other people. Because you people, you, you people deserve that kind of thing because you're the gutter yourselves. You're the dirt. You do not give the good, uh, value.
Thank you very much. Sharon Brewer. Sharon Brewer still in this Van Nuys City Hall. Sharon Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Um, I just wanted to do an update on the June 4th, um, 2012 emails that I sent to CD3's office. One of them was, uh, asking about AB 1290 funds. One was about L.A. River Bike Way, Van Alden and Corbin, and the other one had to do with asking for a parking pass for, um, June 6th, went, last Wednesday. As of this email, I have, or as of this morning, I have not received a response to any of the three emails. Since Van Nuys City Hall remote will be closed soon, city council members should provide parking passes for people in the Valley who want to go down to City Hall to do public comment. I have a comment about neighborhood council funding and stakeholders versus dollars allotted. Right now, it's $40,500. The low end, you have a neighborhood council, Allegiant Valley Riverside, that has approximately 6,889 stakeholders. They can spend $5.88. High end is Wellshire Center, Koreatown. They have approximately 95,323 stakeholders. They can spend 43 cents. City Council needs to review NC funding and how to make it more equal for neighborhood councils with more stakeholders. Councilman Rosendahl, I heard you ask, uh, want to report back about home garage vehicles. If you look at CAO memo number 88, GSD Home Garage Vehicles with no cost listed, they end up listing, um, for the mayor, the city attorney, 14 council members have 82 vehicles, and 16 other departments have 17 vehicles. Also, CAO memo 71 is LAPD Home Garage Vehicles, which total 947. Um, I'm not sure if you're going to allow public comment tomorrow on the redistricting, but maybe somebody can answer that before the meeting's over.
We'll get an answer for you. Mr. Zein had a follow-up on the, uh, correct comment?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in response to the emails, I'm checking with the, uh, office to see if any emails were received. We do respond to emails, and I am checking to find at the district if they did receive an email from Ms. Brewer, and we will respond to that. Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. As far as tomorrow, the, uh, the change in operation for, uh, Channel 35 is effective July 1st, uh, so you could make public comment tomorrow. Right now, Madam Clerk, that completes our public comment. I have no other public comment card. So let's, uh, let's, uh, take the items in order. Item number one?
Item number one calls special for cards.
Item number one. All right, item number one, public comment cards. Uh, is it Randall Eli? And Paul Royer? Ms. Chasby, uh, go to the microphone. Do you have, you're making a comment?
Uh, uh, Mr. Lombon, can we, uh, begin with any, uh, potential opposition to item number one?
Well, I would be happy to do that if you want to do that. I don't know if Mr. Walsh is in opposition, but I'll call Mr. Walsh first, Mr. Murphy second.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Surprised, we're in favor. We changed our position. You know, part of rationality is changing your position. We used to be against, uh, these BIDs. However, in our neighborhood, when we had a six-story building at Yucca and Argyle, full of crack addicts with crime all over, and the LAPD didn't see a damn thing, we went to the BID. And the BID were all ex-cops, and they let us know why the, the drug dealers were allowed to stay in that building, and the BID fought and... to stay in that building and the BID bought and cleaned out the building. No thanks to Eric Garcetti, no thanks to the LAPD, all thanks to the B-I-D police. They do an excellent job, cause they're not bought off by the drug dealers. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Sean Murphy? It's a good, this item's good, it's a good idea. Ten eyes on this one. A name of, Mr. Go Kings.
Hi, Go Kings. As we said earlier. Fellow residents of Los Angeles, we all know how difficult it can be when we're, uh, asked to leave our residential homes or be placed out of our residential homes, but there has to be more government, you know, responsibility in this, in this type of action. And when I say action, meaning as you heard, different accounts, how DID did this and what could have been done. And I look at it from a different perspective and that perspective is this. People were having a hard time staying in their homes and we cannot put people on the streets as if, you, if you have not seen anywhere downtown, the homeless population that sit, squander on our streets. When we have vacant buildings downtown where we can place people in, the city has to work with this population of, um, disconnecting people from their homes. So, I'm saving my time and I say I oppose to that. Thank you.
Thank you. As the cards have marked, the rest of the cards, Ms. Shatz from the Central City Association, are for the proposal. Uh, that would be Carol Shatz, Randall Eli, and Joe, I need help pronouncing your last Thank you very much, Joe. Paul Royer? Peggy Moretti?
Moretti.
Moretti, excuse me, Peggy. Glenn Berryhill? And Kathy Falk. So if you wanna just stand together, that completes the cards. And if one wants to speak for everybody to make your point, that's fine.
That's fine. Good morning. My name is Kathy Falk. I'm the general manager of the Omni Hotel here in California Plaza. I'm also the chair of the board of the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. The bid provides a much-needed stopgap between city services and the basic needs of the downtown community at large. The 2012 bid renewal has received over 65% margin of approval to date from downtown business owners who clearly understand that clean, safe streets provide a better environment for our constituents to live, work, and play. Twenty years ago, Pershing Square was home to 600 or 700 people living on packed dirt. The sidewalks of downtown closed at 5:00 PM as the daily rush to leave downtown began. Today, baby carriages, dogs, and amenities required to support a vibrant, active downtown community exists. There are many stakeholders who may take credit for this urban renaissance. However, there has been one constant support of the initiatives required to support this renaissance and that is the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. Whether you appreciate the tens of thousands of bags of trash that we pick up yearly, the continual street cleaning, tree trimming, the marketing economic development initiatives that have brought businesses and residents to downtown, or the safety support services provided, it is clear that the purple shirts ever present in downtown have become a welcome sight and a measure of comfort as we go about our daily business lives. We, the business owners of downtown who fund this bid, urge you to support the renewal of the bid so we may all can continue to enjoy clean, safe streets in the downtown Los Angeles that we all know and enjoy today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shatz. State your name, please.
Good morning. I'm Peggy Moretti.
Thanks, Peggy.
I serve as Executive Vice President of MPG Office Trust, the owner of US Bank Tower Gas Company Tower Wells Fargo Center and are the largest landlord in the Central Business District. We are enormously supportive of our, of our BID and appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Nice presentation.
Good morning. I'm Glenn Berryhill, Vice President of Property Management for Thomas Properties Group at City National Plaza. We're a 2.5 million square foot office building and we strongly support the Downtown Center bid and urge you to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Jill Fleckinger and I'm a resident in downtown. I've been here for seven years and needless to say, I do support the downtown bid because it's made a huge difference to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes the comment. Madam Clerk, this is a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So we're gonna close this public hearing, uh, but then also I have two speakers on the queue who wanna speak, but we're gonna close the public hearing. We've had all the cards spoken. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, I, I wanna thank the downtown bid for coming again and renewing it. Let me tell you, the public-private partnership works. Bids have a very major positive impact on communities. I have several bids in my district. It works really well and I know the bid has been engaged for years now, making a big difference downtown. I enthusiastically, uh, support them and endorse their bid. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. And, uh, I remember when we did not have these business improvement districts in downtown, we were not able to provide adequate services to, uh, address the issues of trash, debris, public safety, um, marketing, to bring more people downtown to live, to shop, to work. Now that balance has been tipped in our favor and, uh, this is a good process. This has been a fair process and I hope that you will support the bid as it moves forward in continuing to cause our city to benefit from their growth, expansion, and very focused hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. With that being said, Mr. Zine? Mr. Coretts?
Other end.
Mr. Coretts, you have your...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, I think any of us that spent any length of time in Los Angeles knew what downtown used to be like. The bid and other great work downtown has made a tremendous difference and I can't imagine that we all won't support this and commend them for their great work.
Uh, council member Joe Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. I, um, I too will stand in support and continue to support our business improvement districts throughout the city. Um, I can truly testify, uh, in seeing the success what a bid can truly do to a, uh, a business district. Uh, even more so, we have formed one at the San, Downtown San Pedro Business Improvement District. I, I called on the, uh, the property owners along the Gaffey Corridor in San Pedro to meet and, um, our, our thoughts are also to form a bid along the Gaffey Corridor, PCH in Harbor City, Avalon in Wilmington. If you also, um, again, I just go back to my, uh, my experiences working as a street cop and as a senior lead and Mr. Rosendahl, you're absolutely right. We have to rely on these public partner, partnership, public-private partnerships. Say that 10 times fast. But as a slow, we just couldn't do it all. The city can't do it all. And to see the success, and I worked the streets in Hollywood as well, and that Hollywood bid is, uh, what a complete turnaround. Uh, so I'll, um, stand and support this and, um, encourage other businesses in, in these specific districts to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for those nice compliments about Mr. Garcetti and the Hollywood bid, which is real good. All bids. Carol, stand up one time, just real good. Great leadership, Carol Shatz on this. Thank you very much for that. So, uh, no other speakers on the queue. Uh, this, uh, let's, uh, on this item here, we're gonna close the public hearing, but we're gonna continue this, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, and the public announcement of the tabulation of the ballots will be on Tuesday, June 19th.
And then will it come back to city council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. So, uh, on closing the public hearing, so ordered close. Next item.
Item number two.
Mr. Parks, hold on a second. Mr. Parks?
Ask that we reconsider item seven from Friday's agenda for a short technical amendment.
All right, uh, for reconsideration on that item, could you describe the item, uh, Mr....
Basically given technical, uh, amendment, uh, direction to General Services Department regarding a surplus property parcel.
A specific parcel?
The specific parcel would be at the corner of Figaro and Pico.
Figaro and Pico. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. President, is there a council file number for...
Council file number is 11 dash 1718.
Mr. Parks, let me let the city attorney look that up right now. We'll get back to that. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, uh, let Ms. Brewer know that, uh, we did respond to her email and that's being handled by my deputy chief of staff, Mr. Garcia. If she has any further questions, she should contact him, uh, but we did respond. She said we did not and I've got the copy of the email. We did respond to her. Thank you.
I know. All right, thank you very much. Now, Ms. Perry, you're standing. Uh, can I ask you, you might kinda help you, Ms. Perry?
I can't speak on this item because it's, this is, he's doing this on my behalf since I was not here on Friday.
Got it, I got it. Okay, good. Mr. Parks, now I'll call him, Mr. Parks, you were standing, Ms. Perry. So, Mr. Parks, could you reiterate what you'd like us on reconsideration?
Would like to ask that reconsideration on file number 11 dash 1718 to give a short technical direction to General Services regarding, uh, a city-owned parcels at the corner of Figaro and Pico, uh, as it relates to an RFP.
In what corner of Figaro and Pico?
Uh, the northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Matters before us now.
Now I can speak.
Ms. Perry, please.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, this again deals with council file 11 dash 1718 relative to amending prior council action of December 13th, 2011 regarding the release of a request for proposal for the potential sale and development of city-owned parcels on the corner of Figaroa Street and Pico Boulevard. This motion simply added technical instructions to GSD to prepare the parcel as surplus and to have the asset management division conduct an audit in preparation for the request for proposal. There is no reason to wait on acting on this motion, so I ask you to vote yes on this today. The chief legislative analyst is available to answer any questions any member might have. Otherwise, I ask for an eye vote.
Yeah, technical question. Would it be an appraisal or an audit? You mentioned audit, Ms. Perry.
I'm sorry, it's an appraisal.
Appraisal, so, okay. Any questions of that? We have that correct, Mr. City Attorney? No questions for this technical amendment? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
And I'd like to have this go forth.
Fourth with on this matter.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Item two, call special for cards.
Thank you very much. Sean Murphy? Michael Calleone? And Mr. Kings?
I am too, is, I'm gonna get, I'm for the sign, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we're putting properties in nuisance abatement. Why is it that, uh, for the past two years, I've been bringing a nuisance abatement problem to you and you've done nothing about it? The property on Soto is a nuisance abatement. You're blocking the streets, you're blocking the sidewalks, weeds are growing out of it six feet tall. But yet, a homeowner has any, a nuisance and you guys wanna find him, you wanna sue him, you wanna go out and do it yourself. City Attorney might be able to sit down, cause I can't speak over his voice. Okay? Nuisance abatement is mutual for city property. You guys put K rails up on Soto Street and now the weeds are growing around them. It's disgusting. Litter is around there. Dog poop. City council poop. A lot of stuff is all over those K rails, but yet you don't go down there and clean it up. You caused this nuisance by not dealing with this in a proper fashion, in a timely fashion. Yet, you come here and you have the audacity to put other people's property in a nuisance abatement clause? You wanna charge them up to $25,000 to $30,000 because you feel that it's wrong? Shame on you guys. Do what's right and make sure that everybody's treated equally and that the property on Soto is taken care of immediately. Once again, you guys can get a parade going in one day, but you can't get a wall up in eight years. I, I don't know why, but it sounds a little fishy to me. There's something going on with this wall and I am gonna get to the bottom of it.
You gotta speak, Mr. Kings?
Mr. Herman, for the Kings.
Your card said, Mr. King.
Go Kings. But fellow residents of Boyle Heights and those of you in Los Angeles who can listen and care to listen, Mr. Calleone is correct. Going on eight plus nine years, we have a K rail set up on a sidewalk now and no one can access the corridor. The Soto of corridor has always been an open corridor and now the city of Los Angeles violates the rights of people with the American Disability Act not to use that corridor. And so to say, as Mr. Calleone points out, who is responsible to remove this nuisance? Who will take action here at city council because it is a city business? As if you read in the next page of your agenda, there are many charges, building and safety has charged the persons that live at this property. Furthermore, again, there is a policy by the city of Los Angeles ordinance under municipal code that you must get a permit to advertise a sign or a mural. And so going back to this, all the signs and trash and debris that is a way of display is a violation. If you wish to put up your trash, your barrier on our corridor, we want it removed. Now there are two voices in concern to this on top of Mr. Calleone and myself, and that is the neighborhood council. I am gonna take it with them and say, BHNOC and BHNO, let's do something to make access available in our Boyle Heights area because again, the city of Los Angeles has ignored us and we're gonna take an action whether we have to do it in a civil matter or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other cards, no other speakers. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Next item.
Thirteen eyes.
Thirteen eyes, thank you. Sorry for stepping on your voice. Next item.
Item seven, call special by Councilmember Buscaino.
Item seven.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I, I stand and support this, this item before you and I'm pleased to. I, I worked side by side with our port police officers the last six, seven years out in the harbor area. What we have before you is an MOU, uh, presented that does several things that not only benefit port police, but also this great city. The port police here, um, will receive a much-deserved 7% increase in salary over a period of five years and these officers will start making a 5% contribution to offset the cost of healthcare, making them the only other bargaining unit in the city to make such a contribution out of their own pockets. Similarly, we, uh, have the port officers that will contribute 4% of their pensionable pay to retire, um, retiree healthcare, which will further help the city offset the costs of providing such benefits to its lairs' members. This MOU reduces the salaries of new hires by 20% and also recognizes the specialized maritime work performed by port police officers by offering various bonuses, um, that will compensate them for port-specific policing activities they engage in on a daily basis. Let us be reminded that these are our maritime security experts and I'm pleased to stand and support them. Also like to thank the, um, the membership leadership, um, port, uh, from the Port Police Association, Sergeant Glenn Towery and Officer Frank Wang, who are here today. Um, and also, uh, the entire, uh, port police department, uh, for doing their part and, and keeping the city of Los Angeles and one of the largest ports in the world safe. I saw firsthand over the weekend when the USS Iowa came to town, um, the boats that escorted her down the main channel and, um, just to know that they're here to keep us safe, uh, is important. I also can, can, can tell you that, um, oftentimes we call for backup in the city of Los Angeles in the harbor area and to see the port officers running, just getting there as fast as they can, code three, and to see that we have that partnership with the police depart, with the Los Angeles Police Department and that great working relationship with the... and that great working relationship with the Port PD, I'm just proud of them. And I'm here to stand and ask you, colleagues, to support this item before us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Well, let me say something about the port police. They are genuine law enforcement. I've seen them in action. I've seen them how they jump from one little ship to a cruise ship to make sure that it leaves the port safely. I've been there many times when they've had exercise with the Los Angeles Police Department. And a lot of folks don't realize that all of the commerce that comes to the city of Los Angeles and then goes to the Alameda Corridor and disperses throughout the United States comes through the port of Los Angeles. It's a very professional department. They work tirelessly. They've got the underwater team. They got the motorcycle officers. They are protecting our port, which protects commerce throughout the United States. So when we look at this MOU that's been brought forward, MOU, MOU number 38, it goes back to 2009, 2009 to 2014. So I think it's in order that we approve this, and I just want to offer my congratulations to the members of the port police for the great job they do protecting. And as my colleague said, who came from the Harbor Division, there is a very close relationship with the port police and Los Angeles Police Department, a very cooperative relationship. But if we don't protect our port, all those imports and all those exports are in jeopardy. And it's a critical issue that we need to maintain support and security for. So I do totally support this. Again, this dates back to 2009. It's taken that long for those folks not to have a contract. So they will get one hopefully today unanimous. And this gives them the assurance that we're supporting them in their endeavor to protect the port of Los Angeles. So I can't acknowledge enough the support that I have for them and all they do to protect our port, the world's port. And to the representatives that are here, it's good to see you in these nice, friendly surroundings. Because I know some days out in San Pedro and the port, it's beautiful, sunny and bright. And some days it's cloudy and overcast, rain or shine, you folks are there 365 days a year. God bless you and safe journeys along the coast as they patrol and make it safe for all. So an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and thank you, Mr. Buscayino. And I want to thank our officers as well, who I sat down with recently as well. And I think it is important for us to actually say again some of the things that Councilmember Buscayino mentioned because there's an impression out there right now about public employees that runs counter to my experience, about the brave men and women who are a part of port police and our city in general. One myth is that we're not stepping up to solve our problems. And this is evidence, even though this is not even a general-funded department. It is funded through a port that is in the black and doing well. They've stepped up and done the right thing, whether it's on looking at retiree health care, whether it's looking at our health care costs out of pocket. It was the Engineers and Architects Association the first ones to do that. You know, when we looked at the soaring cost of health care, it's tripled for the city in the last 10 years. But we as city employees didn't pay anything out of pocket, so we didn't feel that pain at all. This is something that is sustainable for families, but at the same time, we will have an incentive to make the right decisions, to live healthier lives, to quit smoking, to do those things that bring down our health care costs because we've got a little skin in the game. I also think that when we look at, you know, the importance of making sure that we preserve pension and retiree health care, this is another union that has stepped up and done the right thing. And, you know, for everybody who goes out there in politics, if you beat your chest and beat up public sector unions and beat up public employees right now, you get more headlines than if we do what we do here in the city, which is quietly sit down with leadership, negotiate good contracts, do the right thing. It should be screaming headlines that say that, that we have employees that are not only protecting our most valuable asset in this city, but that have provided leadership. And leadership is easy when its times are plenty. Leadership is difficult when the times are leaner. And I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank this city for negotiating what's right for sustainability of this fine force. And we will always protect its independence as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Two speaker cards, Mr. Herman, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Herman?
Mr. President, public hearing was held in committee for this item.
Thank you very much. Then we note those for the file. Thank you. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item.
Item 10, call special for cards.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, Mr. Walsh.
It's no wonder that there are haveability issues and concerns in our our area. But citations, none whatsoever. Mr. Michael Corian, who stepped away, has brought out to our attention, why is there non-compliance with any building in safety or LA Housing Department to take an action with a nuisance abatement when it comes to owners that have not corrected or have been cited for violations and proof of their compliance with the city of Los Angeles? So council members, if you wish to really improve our communities, whether it's downtown Broadway or West Side, take some action in Boyle Heights. Take some concern in an area that has been impacted by lack of services. Unfortunate disrespect, unconsideration and unethical action by certain departments of the city that have not taken an action to simply have these properties in compliance. And more so, remove the nuisance abatement. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Walsh Confidential. Here we are. This concerns REAP, bad landlords. Mr. Garcetti's sitting here. Actually, he does a good job with bad landlords in LA. And we want to, when he goes into private life after the mayoral election, we hope you can come back and help us in Hollywood. REAP is important. So is HollywoodHighlands.org. And I just, it's such a pleasure not to be heckled when I get up here the way Garcetti used to. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item.
Item 12, call special for cards.
Mr. Sean Murphy.
This is going to be my last card. I want to give my fans a shout out. Want to tell my fans, have a good summer. I'll see you in September, folks. I'm for item 12. It should be a good item. Let's pass it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That completes the public comment on that. And no speakers on the queue. So open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item.
Item 15, call special for cards.
Mr. John Walsh, item 15, special for cards.
I will. Hey, thank you. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns charter schools. Now, here's the question. Do the charter schools have rights that LAUSD doesn't? Because something very disturbing happened this week. A charter school called Samius sent a cease and desist legal letter threatening a lawsuit to a blogger, to Mayor Sam. I don't think they had the right to do that. I think that we need an investigation. I think that that it is mind-boggling that a blogger is about to be sued. In the history of LAUSD, no, no one has ever been sued, a member of the press. In the history of California, going back to the mission days, no school has ever sued the government, sued a reporter. Now, with these corrupt charter schools, we have lawsuit threats. Go to Mayor Sam now. Read all about it. One minute.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item.
Item 18, call special for cards.
Mr. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns rewards. We're very, we think there should be an institution of rewards for rape. As you know, Garcetti has left. He got a phone call, his campaign.
He's right here with me, Mr. Walsh. Confer it on issue.
Oh, he's a, he's a, you never know where he is. Here, there? Okay, we'll keep an eye on him. And he is very rape-friendly, rape-tolerant.
He is, he is not discussing this item.
This issue is, I am asking for a $50,000 reward for information leading to the arrest of the rapist on in Hollywood. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you. You don't give a damn, do you, Garcetti?
Thank you. No speakers on the queue.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's a request to note and file this item.
All right, let's note and file this item. Let's note and file. Do I need to vote on note and file?
Yes.
Yes, so there are no objections. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item.
I would like to ask that item 12 go forthwith.
12 go very forthwith. Thank you very much. We had that coming. Next item.
Item 19. The Budget and Finance Committee report has been circulated. A motion is required.
Mr. Corian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the recommendations contained in the report. The report indicates that the committee submitted the matter without recommendation. It, the recommendations had of affirmative vote of two to one, but because we only had three members of the committee at the time, the report had to be submitted without recommendation. I think Mr. Cardenas had some questions that he wanted to raise on this matter. But by a two to one vote, the committee voted in favor of the the recommendations.
Mr. President, is there a second to Mr. Corian's motion?
Second. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I'd like the staff to come up and then also apparently the CAO mentioned that the representative from Best Bestin Krieger would be happy to come forth and answer some questions. I assume you're with Best Bestin Krieger? Your name, sir?
Brant Deverne. Excuse me, Brant Deverne. A partner from the litigation department with Best Bestin Krieger.
Okay, great. My questions, colleagues, stem from the fact that when the city of Bell was going through all of that, those issues and problems that became an international story, Best Bestin Krieger slash an attorney named Ed Lee, who my my understanding branded at one time, Ed Lee, before he left Best Bestin Krieger, was a partner. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so a partner of Best Bestin Krieger was the contracted attorney. Best Bestin Krieger was contracted by the city of Bell to represent them. And it's my understanding that in all of the efforts that took place that got the city of Bell in all the legal problems and the fiduciary violations to their constituents, et cetera, every single one of those actions, every single one of those documents should have been or were, in fact, brought to the attention of their city attorney at the time. And the city attorney had to opine and or advise their client, the city of Bell, as to whether or not those actions were either legal, whether those actions were appropriate, et cetera. So being that the Best Bestin Krieger is before us, potentially to start a very important contract with the city of Los Angeles, I just wanted to know, on behalf of us as policymakers, what Best Bestin Krieger has to say about their involvement in the city of Bell? And in addition to that, what can you tell the city of Los Angeles that you would do differently or and or make sure that that kind of stuff or or that things are handled properly?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. The city of Bell was never a longstanding client of Best Bestin Krieger. It wasn't an original client of Best Bestin Krieger. It was, as you pointed out, Mr. Lee's client for about 10 years at another law firm. He brought the client to Best Bestin Krieger. Bell was a client of my firm for a period of approximately four years.
Four years?
Four years. We have, when this issue first developed, my firm resigned from being the city attorney of Bell. Mr. Lee then, at the same time, resigned from Best Bestin Krieger. I think it's important to keep this in the following perspective, that Best Bestin Krieger is a 120-year public agency firm in the state of California. We may be the oldest public agency firm in the state of California. We only had an association with Bell for four of those years. We have 200 attorneys at Best Bestin Krieger. We had one attorney that was the city attorney of Bell. We represent 50 cities, 75 special districts. Many of them were redevelopment agencies that are no longer, and 115 school districts. We lost Bell as a client of the firm and we lost part of the work that we did for the city of Downey. The remaining client stayed with the firm. What we do for all of our clients is we provide legal advice. And I think it's important to keep that distinction in mind. We provide advice. We don't make policy. The issues that were associated with Bell, which dealt with the salaries of council members and the city manager, are policy decisions. One of the things that is important to keep in mind is that we're appointed as city attorney. We're not elected. And what that means is, is we take our assignments directly for all the cities that we represent in that capacity. And we work on the things that are assigned to us. We don't necessarily have access when we work for a city to everything that goes on in a city. I personally have a 20-year association with the city I live in, which is the city of Los Angeles. I have represented you in special litigation personally for over 20 years. What I do for you is I bring to you, the city, the best attorneys at my firm, the redevelopment specialists in this instance, Brett Hawkins, Seth Merewitz, Elizabeth Hall. These are people who have authored the text on redevelopment, our general counsel to California Redevelopment Agency. And what I'm able to do because of my both longstanding association with Best Bestin Krieger and my longstanding association with the city of Los Angeles is get the very best people to represent you. I did all of your sequel litigation on Staples Arena, a lot of your eminent domain cases. My joke is, we see how that's developed. The Kings won. Not that I had anything to do with that, but the physical space. And I recently successfully settled a $40 million case on the Cecil Hotel for this city with zero liability and got an agreement that the Cecil Hotel would be a residential hotel. So I think we have to put this in perspective of of the fact that 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 what what my firm and what we what I personally do with the city and where Bell lands on the perspective of of the many clients that we've represented. I think it's important to note also that that, you know, we did represent Bell, we resigned from Bell. Another firm came in our place, Myers-Navey, they've since left Bell as well, and they're now on their third firm. It may not be that it's a law firm issue, so.
Well, I appreciate your answers and I appreciate that is the most frank and and decent explanation of what your involvement was in the city of Bell. Because the answer that you gave the CAO, according to what was read to me in committee, was basically that Mr. Lee is no longer with the firm. And with all due respect, everybody who is on trial can say, well, you see, I've been on this planet for 40 years and it was just that one five-minute instant and that's why I'm up for murder charges or what have you. With all due respect, my point to you is, what can you explain to this council that you will do a better job of making sure that both your fiduciary and legal responsibilities that you hold to them are true? Because with all due respect, the fact that Mr. Lee was dismissed doesn't explain how Mr. Lee was allowed to operate for four years under your firm. Am I correct to assume that when a lawyer is either a partner or a lawyer with their license hanging at a firm, that the buck stops with the firm at the end of the day?
That's correct.
You know, legal and fiduciary matters, the buck stops with the firm. It doesn't end with the actual lawyer, correct?
I would, the legal responsibility is the firm's. The the, but there can be a big difference depending on who you have, who you're, that's directly responsible to you. I think that can make a tremendous amount of difference to the individual. But the legal responsibility for what goes on at Best Bestin Krieger lies with the law firm of Best Bestin Krieger. firm of Best Bestin Krieger, and that's correct. And I think in response to the incident in Bell, we acted in a very responsible way in resigning from the city, and I think my law partners who resigned from the firm acted in a very responsible way. On a going-forward basis, I personally don't believe, I'm not intimately involved with the Bell matter, but I don't believe that my firm did anything wrong with respect to the city of Bell. I believe that we do provide good and sound legal advice, then we do so now, we do so in the future, but—
See, look, my concern is—
All right, thank you, Mr. Cardenas. We're way over now.
I'll push my button again.
Okay. Push your button again.
Okay. Ready?
All right, you've got three sharp minutes.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Cardenas.
Look, my question to you isn't whether or not you have sound legal lawyers at the firm. My question is, with the management of the firm, four years, the city of Bell, which seemed to be a hotbed of four years in the city of Bell, please help me understand. Are you trying to, are you saying that, you described very lightly what the activities were between the city of Bell electeds and the hired city attorney, which for four years was represented by your firm? Apparently, they were involved in creating documents and taking actions relative to grossly excessive salaries, and in addition to that, business license fees, city loans, business taxes, ethics training and compliance with the city charter, et cetera, et cetera. These are matters that I know at our level of governance, we confer and get the opinion of our lawyers all the time. And with all due respect, I think all of us have been here long enough to experience that sometimes our lawyer does say, "This is what I recommend," and as electeds, we may go in a different direction. But it appears in this particular case with Bell, they were going in a very, very strong direction, and I have yet to hear at any point in time that Mr. Lee and/or your firm ever objected to their client continuing to go in such a massive, incredibly, either fiduciary or legally, in the wrong direction. So what oversight, what kind of management do you have at your firm that can assure us that if you happen to have a very smart lawyer who tends to go astray or what have you, or is not giving good advice to their client, because that's what you get paid for, right, to give advice? What do you do? What's your checks and balance? Have you changed your checks and balances since Bell?
No, I, yes. I mean, I don't know if we change our checks and balance specifically in response to Bell, but we have a very, we meet regularly in the municipal practice group, which includes litigators like myself, and also municipal attorneys who are general counsel to the counties and to the cities. And we have a general counsel that is an outside counsel that provides advice to the firm, so if someone wants to seek advice. What I can't tell you is, is that was specifically instituted in response to what happened in Bell. I don't think it was a longstanding thing, but it's something that a lot of firms have come to do. We also, I think, as any law firm that does what we do in response to what the numbers were on some of the salaries that were at Bell, that that was looked at throughout the firm, through all of our clients that we represent, that sort of review went on. I wasn't privy to that, though. You have to understand that I personally do special litigation for the firm, for the city, and for some of the public clients, but I know that there were specific things that were instituted. I may not be the best person to respond to that.
Yes. On that note, I really appreciate you coming forward and your willingness to answer these questions, but at the same time, you just pointed out that you're not exactly the best person with the firm who can actually talk about the issues that I happen to be asking questions about, which was signaled to you yesterday in committee. It was signaled to your firm that I was going to be asking questions relative to Bell. In addition to that, I actually asked questions about a year ago at the Board of the League of Cities as to why we're hanging out with this firm, because you guys are very involved in the League of Cities as well, and I had yet to hear from anybody from your firm saying, "Hey, if you've got questions, Mr. Councilmember, you know, just a good idea for you." When somebody from the largest city in the state of California starts asking questions about your firm openly and in public, you might want to go ahead and say, "Hey, you got any questions? We'd love to answer them," because you never know when we're going to run into each other like this. So just a bit of advice. In addition to that, in addition to that, my last point, Mr. President, is this. One of the problems that I see with big firms of every kind, whether it's banks or attorney firms or what have you, once they get to a certain size, it appears that whenever something bad happens, they just pluck somebody out of the firm and toss them away, and then everybody thinks that everything's fine. I really want to know what changes you've made with your firm to make sure that anything like that never happens. It's good for you. It's good for business for you to make sure that potential clients understand that perhaps it was, in fact, an anomaly. I'm not sure about that yet, because I haven't heard what changes have been made to make sure that things don't run astray or things don't get so far off that we have a fiasco like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. There's no other speakers on the queue. So on this item, we vote on it right now?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Eleven ayes, two noes.
Okay, very well. Next item, please.
That passes, Mr. President.
That's right. Passes forthwith on that matter. Next item.
Item 22. An amended motion, 22A, has been circulated.
22A has been circulated? And no, nobody on the queue, no cards, Madam Clerk?
No cards.
And nobody on the queue. 22's been circulated. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Thank you very much.
Adopted as amended.
Adopted as amended. Next item.
Item 24. Call special for Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Could I ask staff to come up on this one, please? The zip line. Wreckin' Park.
Mr. Rosendahl suggests Wreckin' Parks to sit down for a moment here.
They're right there.
I want to take 26, because a member has a very important matter.
Sure.
Madam Clerk, let's set that on the desk, and let's have the matter 26 right now. You want to call it in, Madam Clerk?
Item 26. Call special by Councilmember Bluscaino.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I introduce this motion, colleagues, because I saw that the Airport Commission had issued a sole-source contract for public Wi-Fi services at LAX. Two things that concern me right away about this contract is that it's not supporting an LA-based company, and on its surface, it doesn't appear to be maximizing the airport's revenue. On top of that, this contract could be in place for up to three years, and we know technology can clearly change a lot in that timeframe. It also concerns me that when we use a sole-source tool, that there isn't consideration that goes into benefiting local-based businesses, our own LA city businesses, businesses that reside in the city of Los Angeles. So because this contract would not normally come to council for review and discussion, I thought the best thing to do is to air it out, bring in LAX, and bring it to full city council to discuss it. And I know my colleague, Bill Rosendahl, has some concerns about delaying it. I, too, have concerns about delaying it. You worked hard, along with Mr. Labonge and my predecessor, Janice Hahn, as well as worked hard at bringing free Wi-Fi to one of the largest airports in the country. And I'm no, I'll be clear, I don't want to delay this, but I think it's long overdue, and we're one of the last major airports to not have public Wi-Fi available to visitors. So I'd like to bring up Ms. Debbie Bowers. She's a Deputy Executive Director of Commercial Development at LAWA. Ms. Bowers, I understand that this two-year contract with a one-year option, you okay?
Yes, I am.
Is being recommended by the airport so they can provide public Wi-Fi while staff implements a longer-term plan to build digital infrastructure and a more permanent public Wi-Fi system. Couple questions, first off. At a glance, it appears that this plan is going to take three years, and what are your plans to expedite the rollout of the state-of-the-art, of a state-of-the-art digital infrastructure system at the airport? If you can please detail the different phases and how long it will take? And secondly, what if we have to pull out of the contract? If we have a buyout? If so, how much is that going to cost?
Okay. Well, first of all, I want you to know that this is a priority, obviously, for LAWA, and we have put a lot of resources to researching this and to working on the RFP. We're still working on the RFP. There's some technical issues that need to be addressed, so we think that it'll take six to nine months to release the RFP itself for the digital antenna system operator, we call a DAS operator. We think to get through the system of, once we select one and get it awarded all the way through city council, it's about six months. And once it's awarded, we think it will take the DAS operator nine to 12 months, if not a little longer, to put the actual infrastructure in. If we are able to speed that up in any way, the contract with AWG is cancelable with a 60-day notice. We do have to do a buyback of any improvements that we have approved, which is, at the max, $700,000, and it's depreciated over a 12-month period.
I know we may have a couple speakers on the queue, but I'll push my button again.
As the first speaker, you get six minutes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. What kind of service are we talking about here for the public? We're looking at, are they going to use existing infrastructure to provide 45 minutes of Wi-Fi? If so, what will the quality be?
They are going to use existing infrastructure. They are going to put up some boosters. I don't really understand the technology too well, but some sort of booster so that when we go free, it won't crash totally. And so hopefully, we have some good service or decent service. It is, you have to watch a 15- to 30-second ad when you log into the free, and then you have 45 minutes. If you want to stay free, you just log off and log back in and have to look at an ad again. They also are providing a premium service, which has a faster speed and better capabilities to download movies or whatever it is that you're trying to download. And then also, they support any subscribing type of contracts, like with AT&amp;T, Boingo, Verizon, and all of those.
And why didn't we reach out to any of the Wi-Fi companies based out of the city of Los Angeles?
Actually, we were working with Boingo a while back through one mechanism to get them on board. We were working through that, and then the city attorney told us that we couldn't do it that way. Because T-Mobile had notified us that they were getting out of the business of providing Wi-Fi, we were sort of under the gun to get something done. Something that's acceptable is to, what we call, piggyback, or to join a contract with another government agency who has done a competitive process. We knew that San Francisco Airport had just done this, and they had a lot of similar situation. They had T-Mobile as the current provider with an infrastructure similar to ours. They did not want to put a lot of money into the infrastructure. They wanted to have the free or hybrid model like we're doing. So based on that, we went and looked at their competitive process, and we piggybacked on the contract, and we tried to. Then what happened is San Francisco calls, there's a lease, and we call ours a concession. So we lost the technicality of being able to do that. So we went to the sole source, because it is impractical for us to actually try to do an RFP right now and complete and have someone in before T-Mobile wants to exit the business.
Very good.
Thank you. We have two cards. We go with those first, and then we'll go with the next two speakers.
Well, I'll speak right now, because that would be a civil. I just ask for a no vote on 245. As the committee chair in reviewing this here, the general manager and director of the airport wants to see Wi-Fi like all of us as soon as possible, and to connect to a legitimate, already-existing contract is this possibility. And also, this whole matter will be coming before you again within 24 months. So right now, if it's 60 days, and I'm sure it's the number-one complaint we get at LAX, that there's no Wi-Fi, there's no Wi-Fi in areas. So I would support the commission. I would support the director, and I would see the Wi-Fi capability within 60 days of now. If we have to retract this, send it to committee, go through the months, and then to try to bid it, it will only be longer. If you want to serve the people who go to the airport, vote no on 245, and you'll see some action from the airport department. If you want to bid this out, and it will come right up to the tail of the next time we'll be bid out, then you could go the other way. Vote no on the 245.
Okay, we'll go next to Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague in the 15th District was very clear about us wanting local folks to do local things. And frankly, I have been pushing for six years to have Wi-Fi at that airport. Obviously, the number-one destination airport in the world, the sixth-largest in the planet, it should have had it years ago. But you're making it clear that you'll come back to us, and we'll issue an RFP, and then we'll be able to give the local player an opportunity to bid and do it, correct?
Correct.
What's your timeframe for that?
We hope to have that RFP on the street within six to nine months.
Six to nine months. And what can we do as a committee to expedite that, to see that that happens?
Well, we've already hired a consultant to help us write it, so Ms. Lindsay has put a lot of resources on it to expedite it, because this is a top priority for all of us.
Very good. And again, I want to thank you, Joe, for doing what you did. We all need to know these things, and local-based, of course, in my opinion, has great value to all of us. So I look for a no vote so that we can launch it July 1, and then this six-to-eight months process will bring it back, and we'll be able to go forward with it. I don't want to hold it up another day, and I appreciate that Joe understands that, and he and I have had this conversation. So the whole point of it right now has been to put it out in the public, so we can all understand this process, and to put pressure on the department to issue an RFP so that local folks can get involved. And I look forward to report back to Mr. Labonge's committee as quickly as you can on the status of it and the update of it and the clarity of it, so that we can go to that competitive bidding. But I don't want to hold up Wi-Fi at the airport another six months or a year. July is a perfect time to do it, but it's temporary in the context of the group that has it. And this process is very important, that we open it up and give people in the local community a chance. So I thank you, Joe, for what you just did in making it aware, but of course, I'd like you to vote a no vote as well, so that we can move forward in July. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon.
You said that the reason that you went sole source was because you didn't have time to do an RFP?
We were notified by T-Mobile that they were going to terminate because they're no longer in the business.
I heard all that, right.
Okay. So we were working to get it through another mechanism, through our advertising contract. The city attorney had approved that.
I'm just asking why you went to sole source. You said on the record that it was because you didn't have time to do an RFP.
Correct. And the reason that we didn't have time to do the RFP is we've been doing—
I'm not concerned about the reasons for why you didn't have time to do the RFP. What is the definition of a sole-source contract?
The definition of a sole-source contract? It's when one can, when the executive director determines or the board determines that it's impractical, undesirable, or impossible to do an RFP process.
Okay. A sole-source contract, I was under the impression a sole-source contract was when nobody else could perform the work.
There's a different definition under the city charter that the board could recognize that a sole source is, under different circumstances, when it's technical and impractical, impossible, and undesirable to do an RFP.
Okay. Are you a city attorney?
No, sir.
Is the city attorney present?
Suzanne Tracy—
Could you explain that charter section?
It's 371 E10 under the charter.
And what does it say?
I have it right here, if you'd like me to read it verbatim.
Sure. Well, how long is it?
It's very short. Subject to the requirements of Section 1022, contracts, including without limitations, those as determined by the contracting authority for the performance of professional, scientific, expert, technical, or other special services, where the contracting authority finds that the use of competitive bidding would be undesirable, impractical, or impossible, or where the common law otherwise excuses compliance with competitive bidding requirements. This is the provision that the Board of Airport Commissioners relied upon in approving this contract.
I don't believe they meet the standard. I do not believe that this contractor is the only one who can do this kind of work, which is essentially what that charter section means.
Actually, there are several provisions in the board report that was approved by the Board of Airport Commissioners, upon which they relied in making that determination. I have a copy of it with me here. The additional factors that they relied upon was the short-term nature of the contract, the need that they've recognized to have free Wi-Fi in the airport—
How does the short-term nature of the contract impact the decision to go sole source?
What I'm doing is walking through the various items that were placed into the board report as the facts upon which the Board of Airport Commissioners relied in making the determination under 371 E10.
I'm asking about that particular clause. How does the sole-source determination relate to that— How does the sole-source determination relate to that particular clause you just read?
What I'm doing is linking for you the facts that the Board of Airport Commissioners relied upon in making the determination that, in this particular instance, it would be undesirable, impractical, or impossible to be able to go through the...
No, I understand that. I'm just asking about that particular clause you just read. How does it relate to sole source? I mean, I don't get it.
The undesirable, impractical, or impossible?
No. You read the clause you read in the determination by the board.
The one factor that I read is in combination with the other issues...
It had to do with the short-term nature of the contract.
In addition to the fact that they wanted to achieve a free Wi-Fi as soon as possible, they wanted to have a bridge contract during the time period that they were looking to go out for the competitive process for the long-term solution, which was the distributed antenna system that they believed would take, I believe, 12 to 18 months to be able to accomplish. The additional fact was that it would be a neutral host system, so that there would be no favoritism to any of the individual companies in addition to the...
Council members, you are walking down a precarious precedent-setting path here that could undermine the whole purpose of the bidding system and competitive bidding process. I do not believe the airports, based on the information that has been presented in this short testimony, meets that standard. And it could undermine future contracting opportunities for local businesses. In this case, it definitely affects the opportunities for local businesses to compete for hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars in the contract.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alakon. If you could wrap up, please. You're over.
I'll press my button again.
Thank you. Mr. Englander.
All right, thank you. I think it is critically important to have Wi-Fi at the airport. It's actually quite shocking that we don't, free Wi-Fi. So, free Wi-Fi. But nothing's free. And there's no vendor out there that would offer this unless there was some hook. And the hook has got to be one of two things, or a combination of them. It's one, that they'll then be able to drive advertising to pay for their costs, and they're going to suddenly have advertising as people either log in or sidebar advertising once they have access, or to capture the information of those travelers, and that's got to be valuable information. And so I don't know what the benefit is to them to do it. Or number two, and/or that they would have at least the ability then when they, I'm assuming they didn't sign something that said they won't bid on an RFP in the future. So then they will now have an upper hand against a local competitor, where they come in and say, "Well, it's already our infrastructure. We're already got our foot in the door. We're already there, and we're going to go ahead and bid, and you're already happy with us," which is an unfair competitive advantage against a local bidder as well. And so with those two things combined, I think it merits at least discussion. There seems to be enough controversy in this and interest and concern that a minimum, it looks like, it should go to a committee for these questions to be hammered out. And so I support the 245. There's a lot of arguments that Mr. Buscagno made, that Mr. Alakon made, that make a lot of sense. And I haven't heard any arguments that don't, quite frankly, that in terms of it going to a committee, and the committee could determine, you know what? We've asked all these tough questions. There's no reason that we can't move forward with this program. And they can make the determination and come back here, and we say, "Okay. Lawa did that great job, and this is going to be a terrific service, and we're going to move forward with an RFP." But it doesn't make sense that we're doing this on the same, on the very eve of producing and distributing an RFP. It sounds like there's something more to it, that just for the terms of discussion purposes, I say we peel back the covers just a little bit, and in the interest of full transparency, we should look at these things, because nothing's free. There's no reason they would be investing. You said how much total dollars that we would have to pay back?
No more than $700,000.
Okay. No more than 700 grand. So there's no reason that they're going to be investing $1 million, and that's for the hard costs that we would have to pay back, plus their labor and installation. There's no, that doesn't make business sense for them to say, "We're going to go ahead and spend $1 million, because we think the airport should have free Wi-Fi." They've got a business decision in this, and we've yet to determine exactly what that is. And if it's the right thing to do, it might make sense. I don't know. But it sounds like there's something missing, and it sounds like it should go to committee. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine.
The computer age's been here for how long?
Two years with the 60-day notice.
No, the computers, the Wi-Fi, the internet, how long?
Two years.
Only two years.
It's two years.
I think the internet's been a lot longer than two years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The internet, the computer, the internet, the fact that we can transmit emails around the world in a matter of seconds, that's been around for a long time. That's what I'm referring, not about the airport, but in general. And I know this council's gone on record many times about local businesses, local businesses, local businesses. And I think we need to practice what we preach, because we keep preaching local businesses. And then I see this situation where Wi-Fi's been around for many years. I'll go to other parts of this country, get my laptop out, go on there, free Wi-Fi, and there's an advertisement. I understand the trade-off. But the fact is, we're rushing this through. We've had years upon years to come up with something. I understand the airport's been dealing with this for like six years to figure out how we're going to do it. So I find it a little interesting that while we keep preaching in this council, support our local businesses, we're dealing with a business that's not based here. It's based in Florida. So I don't know why we couldn't have found somebody in this Los Angeles, LA County region to take this mission and do something with it. So I think the 245 is appropriate. That's the reason why I second it when it was brought to my attention. But Mr. Alakon has some very valid points on this. We want to do a sole source on this because of the urgency, because we want to give the people that go through LAX opportunity to go online, but the fact is, it's been years, and we still haven't done it. But we have to get it done right now. That doesn't make any sense. And the 245 will cause it to have a delay, but the fact is, what's right, what's reasonable? What are we practicing, what we preach? And if we do it the way that's being asked, to give it to this Florida company, we're violating all the rules that we keep on establishing to say, "Help our local businesses." And I don't care who gets it. The fact is, if we're saying something, we should stick by it and not keep changing it because of this. And it's not an urgent thing. It's a necessary thing for people who want a computer, and it's the right thing to do, and we should have done it years ago. But my concern is, we haven't done it. And now, all of a sudden, it's like critical mass time. I just can't buy into that. So my concern is that we have to be honest with what we're doing, and I think there's some, I'm not going to say dishonesty, but some suspicion as to why it's being done in this manner and not done in a proper fashion. We talk about RFPs and this and that. We're going to link onto this contract in Florida. I just can't buy it. I don't think it's logical. I don't think it's reasonable, and I don't think it's ethical. So I'm going to support the 245 that my colleague brought forward. No disrespect to Mr. Labange or Mr. Rosenthal. I know they want to get it done, but we've got to do something finally, do what we say we're going to do. Help the local businesses that are starving, that are closing their doors and laying off employees. And Florida's another place. They got their issues. We have our issues. So I'm going to support the 245.
Mr. Alakon.
Council members, I want to reiterate, the bidding process is a sacrosanct in the city of Los Angeles. And it is so because it's been demanded by the courts, as well as good public policy. In this particular case, I don't see anything that demands that this contract be put in place immediately, other than a desire to have Wi-Fi, you know, let's do that in the entire city. What is going to stop the city of Los Angeles from declaring the same urgency at our city parks? Our Recreation and Parks Commission could declare that we've got an urgency to create Wi-Fi at our city parks facilities.
Libraries.
Our libraries could just declare that we have this urgency to have Wi-Fi service at the libraries. And Lord knows, when I had my brief time in running for mayor, I wanted Wi-Fi in the entire city, and I think it's a good thing. We should. But to suggest that there's an urgency, when, as Mr. Zine points out, Wi-Fi's have been around, Wi-Fi systems have been around for years.
Decades.
You know, I don't think that meets the standard, the legal standard, to justify a sole-source contract. And so I strongly recommend, because what is going to be the next issue, where the nose of the dromedary, the nose of the camel sticks its head into the tent and declares that there's an urgency, and we can't bid, we can't give local businesses an opportunity to compete, because somebody knows somebody in Florida, or who knows where else? This is not the way to do business in the city of Los Angeles. I strongly urge you to vote in support of Mr. Buscagno's motion to vote for a 245 action.
We have two public comment cards. Do you want to hear them first and then close? Tim McCosker, Zach Sturgold.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you very much. Tim McCosker, Mayor Brown, LLP, representing Boingo Wireless. We really appreciate this discussion. It is a very important and significant discussion, and I can appreciate the difficult situation you're in with a 245. The reason why a 245 is the only recourse for a party like this is that the way that Boingo, a Los Angeles company, the largest provider in the world of this service, has found out about this contract being awarded, was through a press release. By its very nature, when you do not do an RFP, you don't reach out to a number of parties. You don't conduct a public hearing. You don't do questions and answers to all parties. You don't have an open and fair process. That in and of itself should be compelling for you all to accept the 245 and send it back. But when you get to some of the core values of the city, you do not get to your core values with a direct negotiation without the RFP process. You do not know whether or not you've gotten the best price. How do you know whether you have gotten the best price? You have one direct negotiation. How do you know whether you've gotten an outreach to minority businesses and women-owned businesses? How do you know whether you've gotten the best service? And how do you know, we actually know the answer to this question, how do you know whether you've gotten the local provider? Because you have Boingo Wireless in the city of Los, it is a real city of Los Angeles business and the largest provider that found out about this through a press release and did not have an opportunity to even do a direct negotiation. Inexplicably, it went to a company because we piggybacked on another jurisdiction's RFP. Well, Boingo Wireless is involved at any given time in a number of RFPs. In fact, just one, a significant RFP in the city of Denver. We could have piggybacked off of that RFP and, for the exact same rationale, avoided an RFP, a public process, which I would not recommend, but the reasoning falls apart.
Thank you very much. Zach, pronounce your last name correctly, Zach.
Sturgold, thank you.
And hold on, Zach Sturgold, right now, the youth and government class from Santa Clarita, give them a big hand. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Thank you very much. Okay, Zach.
Good afternoon, President, council members. Thank you very much for this discussion today. My name is Zach Sturgold, Vice President of Boingo Wireless. We are the largest provider of Wi-Fi service to airports in the world. We currently serve 55 airports in North America and 40% of all passenger traffic. The neutral host Wi-Fi concept that LAX desired is something that we pioneered, and is something that we completely agree with many council members here. We would like to see at LAX as soon as possible. We happen to be located in Los Angeles. We have 150 employees. We're a publicly traded company. We're based just miles down the road from LAX, and we would be happy to have been given the opportunity to act quickly. We were frankly waiting for an RFP to come out when we learned about the sole-source award, and, you know, that's not exactly how we would have liked to have found out about that opportunity. So in the end, all we're asking for is transparency and fair treatment, and we didn't want to pursue this path, because it's come at the cost of any potential relationship with the airport, which concerns us very much. LAX is the most important airport in the world to us. It's our home airport, and we would like to serve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Zach. Mr. Buscagno to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues, for this healthy discussion, bringing this forward. I, you know, we all have an obligation on behalf of the citizens of this great city to ask a few questions when it comes to contract issues. Number one, do we get the best deal? Number two, do we have the best services? Number three, is it a minority-based business that we're supporting? Is it a local, LA-based business? And with that, I move that we move forward and assert jurisdiction over Lawa and bring this to committee to hear more, and, because we, like Mr. Zine said, six years, Mr. Rosenthal, six years, he's definitely worked hard in moving forward with Mr. Labange. But why now? I mean, what happened the last six years in moving forward with this? So I ask for an I-vote. Colleagues, move forward and do what's right for the city.
Aye, aye. So no other speakers on the queue? Mr. Rosenthal, you push your button again.
Well, just want to make this comment, and I would like an answer before the vote. By asserting jurisdiction, how long will it take before we get Wi-Fi? Though right now, I just want a temporary to issue an RFP. How long will it take?
To do a competitive process? It would take us, it would still take us probably six months to get a RFP put together, and then six months to award the contract to the city council.
Okay. So that means a year from now, if we were to put the present strategy in, definitely the process of opening it up, which frankly, I don't disagree with any of my colleagues' comments on that, to be candid with you. I'm puzzled, too. But I don't want to wait another day, but I don't want the group that's in there temporarily to feel comfortable in that spot. But I need to know that we're going to do it quickly. Otherwise, what's the whole point of it?
We are working on it.
Yeah, I know.
It is a top priority. We've hired someone to help us write the RFP, so that we can get it out as soon as possible. We will try our best to get it out a lot quicker than six months, but that's kind of the time period that we have, based on all of the research that we have to do with our infrastructure and what we can use in the technical aspects of the...
Okay, last question. There's been a mumble about this is illegal, what we're doing now. What is your response to that?
Well, first of all, I don't think it's illegal, because the city attorney advised us that it wasn't. There was nothing about the company itself, I had never even heard of AWG, until we went to San Francisco, because we had heard they did the competitive process. We talked to them. They were happy with the transition, and they were happy with the company, and they showed us their competitive process, and they thought that it was run fair and square. And so that's why we piggybacked on it under this clause. Or we tried to, and there's a technicality. So instead of piggybacking on that contract, we have to, we did it as a sole source.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask the city attorney to respond to, would you respond...
52 seconds.
Please.
To respond to whether the contract is legal?
Yeah.
Yes. We actually reviewed the contract in our office. The Assistant General Counsel, the General Counsel of the airports reviewed it and approved it, and so did the Head of the Civil Division, Pete Echeverria.
Okay.
The use of the sole-source 371 E10.
Was this all aired before the commission, and was all that presented and all that stuff, too?
Yes. The materials that I was reading from was the board report that is publicly posted. Prior to the meeting, there was a public agenda item at which these items were covered, and the Board of Airport Commissioners, under that section, made the determinations necessary for this contract. We're basing it on the Board of Airport Commissioners determination.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
It was suggested that it could be delayed six months or up to a year if we took jurisdiction over this, and I'm trying to figure out that timeframe. Assuming we did, and this was approved here now, 245, this action, and assuming that the chair would be willing to hear this as quickly as possible, the next available meeting, which would be within a week, and it came back here, and they blessed and confirmed everything you did, would that still delay it? And we said, "Fine. What you did was, you know, we agree with," in other words, and we were actually able to have a full discussion and take the time to necessarily do the research. And so we took over jurisdiction and then simply blessed everything you did and said, "We agree with it." And you wouldn't have to then go back and revote. You would just move on with it. Would that still hold it up another year?
No. It would only hold it up the time period that it takes to...
So a week, maybe? Or two, at the most?
Right. It just pushes back the time that the contractor will start their implementation, and then we can offer free Wi-Fi.
Right. So a week or two. I think a week or two, or if that's, I think that's more than reasonable, and at least
there's enough questions, and I think, and I can think of many that haven't been asked and answered, that I think it would be appropriate just to look at. I mean, we're talking about, you know, colleagues, if you look at, if you look at what you have to do to log on to free internet, you have to provide a lot of information, perhaps your frequent flyer, travel number, who knows what they're going to be asking for. Those are the things, at least we should just ask the questions. If it's going to be a couple of weeks, I think it's a courtesy to one member. I absolutely agree, Ms. Rosenthal, with what you're saying. We need, I mean, it's embarrassing not to have free Wi-Fi for the airport, really? And when you're delayed for a flight and you're sitting there for hours? I mean, the travel conditions at LAX are, we don't even have to get into that, that's a whole nother discussion. And we're hoping, we're turning, we're turning that around.
Yes.
It sounds like staff just came out with a recommendation for new concessionaire and duty free is now coming up. So, there's going to be a lot of excitement there. This has to go with that, there's no question. But we've got to make sure we do it right. And if it's only going to take a couple of weeks, there's something in it for them, it's a million-dollar investment, let's just ask the questions and get the information so we can make that informed decision. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, do we have any Wi-Fi in any city buildings? Do any city buildings have Wi-Fi? Yes?
At the airport, we do.
At the airport? We already have that at the airport?
We have a for-pay service at the airport.
Okay. And what about LA County? Does LA County have free Wi-Fi anywhere?
I don't know.
How about Starbucks?
Not at the airport, but they do. I think...
So, I think we already have Wi-Fi established at other locations that we're going to piggyback. I don't know why we can't piggyback on something that's already local, it's already in place. Because what this reflects is a backdoor deal that reeks of some conspiracy that really offends people. No disrespect to you or the city attorney's office, but that's what this looks like. And that's not really what Los Angeles should be doing. So, again, I emphasize that we should support the 245. Mr. Alacon.
Yeah, council members, I don't think it should matter how long it takes to do an RFP process. This is a subversion of our policies to support a competitive bidding process, and that should be penultimate in our decision. It shouldn't be a second, there shouldn't be a second consideration. Yes, we want Wi-Fi, we'd love to have it, it would increase our productivity in terms of what people do as a society at the airport, and I just don't understand that there's, that you're equating the length of time it takes in an RFP with the notion of whether it's okay to do a sole source contract. The airport just testified that, on the advice of city attorney, they believe it's legal. And I don't question that the city attorney believes it's legal, too. But we also just had testimony from another law firm who said that they advised the City of Bell, but they were legal, but they were wrong, as I believe it is wrong from a policy perspective and from a legal perspective. So, I do not think we should contract with, in a sole source deal, when we have many, many service providers who can do this for us. And how do we know that this is the best service we can do for LAX? And I am telling you that, in the long run, when you're talking about Wi-Fi, you've got to be looking at the long run in terms of service. And to give a company an advantage like this, getting first-in advantage, is just playing bad business. It's bad business. It's not the way you should do business, and it's not the way the public should operate, either. So, let's pull this in. I think we should pull back the deal in its entirety, but I think to 245, it is a reasonable request.
Mr. Labange.
Chair of the committee, I'm going to schedule a meeting, okay? But I believe in the city attorney, I believe in the airport department. The last six years, what have they been doing? They've been building the airport. They've been building the airport. And now, this is an opportunity to try to please the people who use the airport. And then, soon after this, there's an opportunity for a master agreement on Wi-Fi, on this issue here. But I will have it scheduled on Monday, and we'll get back to council next week so we can make a decision on this, if it's the right thing for the people that use the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for that. With that, there's no one else on the queue, so let's take the vote on this 245. A yes vote supports the 245, and no votes against the 245 vote. Colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, it's 245. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 24, call special for Mr. Rosenthal and for Cards.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Could I ask Kevin Regan to come up? And folks, before you run out, this is an exciting moment to talk about Venice Beach. The Department of Wreckin Park is planning to permit the temporary installation of a zip line attraction to the Venice Beach this summer. The zip line attraction will be a three-month special event that will not only offer a zip line ride for the public, but will involve youth classes in acrobatics and other activities to include free performances for the public throughout the summer. As proposed, the city's portion of the revenue collected will stay with the Department of Wreckin Park, with two-thirds of it used to increase restroom cleaning and litter removal at the Venice Beach this summer. And colleagues, what that means is public-private partnerships, and we will get a piece of this money, and we'll be able to empty our garbage cans and clean our bathrooms, which frankly, we don't have enough funds to do it. The Venice Neighborhood Council, the Oceanfront Walk Stakeholders Committee, as well as the office of my office, are in favor of this program. A coastal development permit is now needed to be able to allow the three-month event to take place this summer. It's because it's in the coastal zone, and the MELWAC gives the commission an opportunity to weigh in. For them to move on it in July, which is what I want, we have to move forward with it now so that we're in a position to do something about it. This motion directs and authorizes the Bureau of Engineering to do the following in the most expedient fashion possible. Conduct the necessary public hearings and prepare the necessary reports and documents to complete the city's portion of the coastal development permit for the temporary zip line attraction event at Venice Beach this summer, so that an application can be generated to statewide coastal commission on this project. The motion also directs the Department of Wreckin Park to provide all necessary background information to the Bureau of Engineering so that the necessary coastal permitting process can be completed by the city as quickly as possible, and that event can take place this summer. If you don't have any questions on it, he's here for questions. I would like your unanimous support to move forward with this right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Alacon.
Actually, I just have, I just have one question. Mr. Rosenthal, will you be using the zip line?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll vote for it.
Mr. Bouskaino, I'll get public comment. Mr. Bouskaino.
I can't wait, Mr. Rosenthal, to go down this zip line for the first time.
Thank you.
And, you know, we have a great communications director, Brandon Kavartik, and we, all we ask is for you to hold this camera as you're going down the first, not the first time down. But what we're talking about is a public partner, public...
There you go.
Public-private partnership.
Public-private partnership.
And it's great to stand, to support this. It's going to make folks come in, visit Venice, spend money, and have a good time at the same time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. John Walsh for public comment, followed by Jessica Caslow from Venice and Gail Rogers from Venice.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. See our new post up today, or a couple of days ago. Zip line. I ask everyone out there, and I don't care whether they're listening to me here, because the 60,000 people who are watching and listening, Google zip line and accidents. Zip line, just the other day, there was a fatal accident on the zip line, and this will be a temporary zip line. I don't trust zip lines. They are dangerous, and they are, they kill tourists. Stay away from zip lines. And also, Google, I ask you to Google the, what we just heard, mayor and the law, and the firm that wants the Wi-Fi contract. It's the mayor's contract, he wired the Wi-Fi contract, and you know exactly what's happening. It's corruption. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Could I have Jessica, Gail?
Gail's going to go first, okay. Gail Rogers, I'm a resident of Wall Street for 40 years. With all due respect to Bill Rosenthal, you know I love you, and he's always, oh, and I salute you, and he's always been there for us. I'm opposing this. Bill says that the Venice Neighborhood Council approved it, but you should note that the vote was eight to six. It was nearly a tie. And also, that the Oceanfront Walk Stakeholders Committee approves it. I don't know who that is, I've been asking everyone. But all the, and you know, because you've gotten emails, all the residents that I know are opposed to this. It's a, it's, it's an artificial entertainment that's antithetical to the appeal of Venice Beach, to say nothing of creating more nuisance in terms of noise to the residents, because you do scream when you get off this thing. It's the responsibility of the Department of Wreckin Parks to keep our park clean without us making deals to compromise the lifestyle and integrity of the residents. Parks are a retreat from the relentless commercialization permeating today's society. Parks are a core city service and do not exist to generate revenue. The zip line will open the door, will open the door to future commercialization of Venice. Don't wreck our park.
My name is Jessica Caslow, I'm a Venice resident as well. And just, I say ditto to everything Gail said, so I won't repeat anything, but this is more of a gentle comment, because I understand that Venice does need to make money, but I was thinking that there is a, there's films being made every single day in Venice, and maybe, just like the Abbott-Kinney Retail Association has made a deal with the film crews that they get a portion, why don't we go to the film companies and for Parks and Wreck and try to get money? Just because I think Venice is a beautiful community, it sustains itself, there's enough recreation, we don't need anymore. So, we should look to other viable options to get money, like the film crews that come in every day to Venice to use and profit from us. Thanks.
Thank you very much. There's no speaker on the queue, so let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So ordered. Fourth with on 26. Bill, just a technical question. If they did want a zip line, do you think a Ferris wheel's out of the question? Okay, next item.
Item 27, call special for Cards.
Thank you. 27, right here. John Jackson.
I'm here with Hunger Action L.A. I'm just here urging the council's support of the farm bill and passing a motion to support Alacon Jose Wezar's motion to encourage Diane Feinstein and Barbara Boxer to stand firm and push harder on the farm bill. Thank you.
Alexis Devault.
Good afternoon, council members, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alexa Delwich, and I'm the Food Policy Coordinator for the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, which is a collaborative network, working with 33 food system leaders, coordinating about 180 organizations to support a good food economy where good food is available to all residents. Thank you for your leadership in fighting to preserve a critical anti-hunger and anti-poverty tool for nearly 450,000 of LA City's most vulnerable residents, both through this, considering this resolution, and also the resolution you adopted in December of 2011. Studies show that the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program is one of the most effective anti-poverty programs that exist today. A recent study by the USDA found that during the recent recession, the food stamp program was responsible for reducing the national poverty rate by 8%. SNAP has become a more important social safety net than ever before, as the effects of the 12% unemployment rate locally has impacted families and individuals across Los Angeles. Between 2007 and 2011, the number of residents enrolled in SNAP has increased in the City of Los Angeles by 60%. Not only does SNAP help put residents, put food on the table, but it produces a multiplier effect, stimulates the local economy. The USDA estimates that for every dollar in SNAP expenditures, we generate $1.73 in additional income. We have over 2,000 stores in LA City eligible to receive SNAP, and in 2011, SNAP redemptions in the City of LA totaled close to $600 million. As representatives of the second-largest city in the country, and standing with mayors from the 10 largest cities in the US and the California Congressional delegation, the Los Angeles City Council can send a powerful message to the House of Representatives and the Senate by urging them to preserve SNAP funding and to avoid any SNAP amendments that will have harmful impacts on the most vulnerable citizens.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jessie Jane Freeblatt. Forgive me. Your time is up, Mr. Herman.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Jones-Greenhold. Very close. And I manage the CalFresh Outreach Team with the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank. Thank you for taking the time in your agenda this morning to address this important, this afternoon, to address this important issue. I support and promote the CalFresh program, or SNAP program, called federally, because the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank cannot feed all the people that are hungry in Los Angeles County. We distributed a record 60 million pounds of food in 2011, and it still wasn't enough. There's no denying that CalFresh SNAP is an important program in our community. During the recession, it has served as a responsive economic stimulus, and it's helped keep families out of dire poverty and hunger. Last year, this council passed a resolution in support of Assembly Bill 6 authored by Assembly Member Fuentes. Among other improvements to the CalFresh or SNAP program, this bill directed California to participate in the Heat and Eat program by linking the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, RLI HEAP, with the CalFresh SNAP program. This linkage simplifies the application process and even provides an increase in benefits for some eligible families. This is a chance for us to make the CalFresh SNAP program work better for Los Angeles families. This resolution is an opportunity for one of the largest, and dare I say, most influential cities in the nation to clearly state the CalFresh SNAP program is important and the people who need it are important, and it shouldn't be cut in the farm bill, as to you support it. Thanks again for your time, and I remain available for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alacon.
Council members, this is a resolution to support those who are in need of food stamps. It only asks that we provide the same level of support as a nation as we do now, moving There are 46 million people that use food stamps in the United States of America. That's one out of seven Americans were signed up for food stamps in 2012. In Los Angeles, almost half a million, in Los Angeles City, almost half a million Angelenos use food stamps, and 1 million residents in the county of Los Angeles use food stamps. To cut, to cut food stamp benefits in the middle of this recession, depression, whatever you want to call it, would be devastating to tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of families throughout the nation, and I think Los Angeles should send a loud message that our nation can do better in terms of taking care of those who are the most vulnerable in our society.
Thank you very much. No speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, items 17 and 28 are closed session items.
Sergeants, will you prepare the council chambers for executive session? Mr. City Attorney, will you read into the record that we're going into executive session?
City Council is going into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956A and, 54956.9A and C.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten p.m. until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten p.m. until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community. everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair. They better and while we begin with an eye with this news exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked as simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as engaged or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can stand up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the Weetip hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. Weetip hotline, 909-987-5005.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
585, I'm at 5060, watch three. 5060, 5060, three, three minutes.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
That includes all documents. Okay, we're back from executive session. Members, any announcements?
Mr. President, council has motions for post-nary referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Desk is cleared. Mr. Garcetti.
I mean, the biggest announcement, obviously, we have the reigning soccer and hockey champions now in the city, well, in the country. And for everybody who was out there, I know certainly Guy Lippa from my staff was about as fanatical a fan as it comes in the Kings, but congratulations to the Kings. We're very excited. I'm sure we'll be hearing more about the march and the parade for Thursday and the days to come.
Very good. Mr. Weezer, announcement?
No announcement, sir.
But any other announcements? Any adjourned motions? Let's rise for adjourned motions at this time. And now let me call on Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Antonio Elias Cruz Valdez passed away April 21st. Born February 16, 1936 in Los Angeles. He passed away in Los Angeles. He was a great man, a great achievement. For many years, he worked for a second-generation rattan manufacturing exporting company. 1965, put his own company together with some close friends. The company grew dramatically, exported to such companies as Macy's, Bloomingdale's, Brown Jordan, Neiman Marcus, and other top-of-the-line markets. California Asia also catered to the U.S. servicemen stationed at Clark Air Base, Subic Naval Base, Cadena Air Base in Okinawa. Cal Asia, California Asia also serviced the embassies of the United States, Israel, and Egypt. 1984, he started a new company, Asia Rattan Manufacturing Company, convinced his people to take a chance with him and his new adventure with his wife and child, moved to the factory site to be close to the struggling company. Before long, he grew the company from a small force of 20 people shipping one container a month to 200 employees after a year. Later that same year, decided to retire and gave his company to his people. The company, by the time, was shipping more than 20 containers a month, and by the 1990s had reached as high as 200 containers per month. His legacy lives on and the company, now known as AW ECA, they exported each year about $20 million worth of furniture. Was a man who embodied the American dream, high integrity, great work ethic, was an advocate for social justice. May his spirit continue to inspire all who have come to know him and may he rest in peace. Survived by his wife, Mary Lou, their daughters, his brother, two sisters, may he rest in peace. Again, this is Antonio Elias Cruz Valdez.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I would like to request that the council adjourn in memory of Isabel Christina Duroe, who died May 26, 2012 at the age of 55. She was born in May 1955 in Salvador de Bahia in northern Brazil. After completing high school, she immigrated to the United States and settled in Los Angeles where she married and raised her two sons. Christina was a soccer and basketball enthusiast and gave back to her community by serving as a soccer coach for AYSO. Many boys and girls in the community can look back fondly on their memories of Coach Duroe, one of the few female AYSO coaches at the time. She is thought of as a great cultural ambassador who shared her wonderful Brazilian cuisine, music, language as a bridge between her native land, Brazil, and her adopted land, California. Christina survived by her sons, Michael and Nicholas, three grandsons, Anthony, Nicholas Jr., and Michael, and a host of family members. Her memorial service was held Saturday, June 9th at Holy Cross Catholic Cemetery.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Bill Littlefield, who passed away this Saturday in Van Nuys at the age of 90. He was born in Los Angeles, attended uni high, and attended UCLA until he joined the Army during World War II, during which time he saw combat between enemy lines in the Pacific Theater. After returning, he attended Hastings College of Law and after that, he worked in the LA County Public Defender's Office for 30 years before retiring as its head in 1993. During that time, he helped countless people with limited financial resources who needed legal representation. He was revered by the public, he served, by the legal profession as a whole, by the office and staff that he managed. And as an indication of the level of respect he achieved, California Supreme Court Justice Armand Arabian noted, "He was one of the most dogged defenders of poor people I've ever seen in a courtroom." So he will be greatly missed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corretts. Members, we adjourn in memory of all those who went before us and we thank those. Let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers. This meeting is now adjourned.